I'll call the November 2nd Common Council meeting. Madam Director of Administration, please call her on.
Mayor Olson?
I'm here.
Alderman DeAndres?
Yeah.
Mayor?
Yes.
Welcome. Here, Henningman.
Here.
Barbara?
Here.
Nelson? Here. We have approved these rights. The common's lead.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic where liberty stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first order on the agenda is Citizens Comment Period. We've done this a couple of times. We've all read this before. I'll just remind everybody again, we're going to, of course, as always, respect each other's opinions. Folks, in the hallway, can you move to the community room, please?
Here.
We're going to respect each other's opinions. We've been doing very well at that. Thank you very much. Three minutes each, one time through only, please. No side comments, no heckling, none of that, because that's all part of respecting each other. No clapping, side comments, that kind of stuff. Let's be nice to each other. With that, let's open the Citizens Comment Period. Anyone wishing to speak, please rise, come forward, give us your name and address, and tell us what you want to say. Mr. Bill?
Good evening. I'm Dave Doll, President of Alice Roller, a manufacturing company in Franklin Business Park. I'm also President of the Franklin Business Park Consortium, since that started in 2015. First of all, I'd like to say that I have firsthand knowledge of what Strauss Brands is about. As from 2009 till 2014, Alice Roller was located directly across the street from the Strauss facility on 60th Street. So every day I drove to work, I drove right past their facility, I parked in a lot within a couple hundred feet of their front door. And for all those years, I can be a witness, it says they operated very clean, very calm environment, clean, no orders, no noises. A lot of times people would even ask what goes on over across the street, because it didn't seem like anything special was happening. I think that's a testament to how they run their business, and they've proven that for many, many years, nearly 50 years, in the business park. They are now trying to expand, as many of us in the park, we have 15 member companies and nine associate members, all of us like being in the park, we also will think about expanding in Franklin. Many of us, many of us have and many of us will. This is important now to see how this goes forward. It seems like this is a very good project, it's been years in the planning stages, there's been very thorough plans submitted for approval. As a Franklin resident, and I've lived here for many years, I want to speak from the point of being a resident. We need to expand our tax base, we need to support companies, particularly those who have a strong, solid base here and have shown they're good corporate citizens. We need to support their efforts to grow. This adds investment in the community, it adds to the tax base, and it also will allow the tax burden to be shared amongst businesses and citizens. Otherwise, we're going to see a significant tax increase for all residents of Franklin. That is a very important situation for all of us to consider. So I'm here tonight to strongly support the new Strauss facility, and we are very supportive for a number of reasons for this to be approved. Thank you.
Very much. Thank you very much. Just now, please.
Hello, my name is Joan Hanson. I'm a resident Franklin. I live at 6418 South 122nd Street. I'm in Alderman John Nelson's district, very district where this would be located. My initial question here is, I'm very surprised to be back here today, I don't want to iron here, unless somebody who voted, one of the four people has changed their mind and asked for reconsideration, I don't know why we are normally looking at item G and having reconsideration. Anybody have an answer to that? Who is, who is the person who put this on the agenda for reconsideration? One of the four Aldermen who did vote the way they did last week? Or the mayor? Or the city attorney?
And one of the four who voted in the majority is entitled to ask for reconsideration.
And has that happened?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Doug Malinovich, 9572 West Prairie Grassway. I'm here tonight to bring up a few issues that you guys have heard why you should say no to the project, and I'm here to bring facts to the table and show that some of these reasons are irrational, irrelevant, and somewhat hypocritical. Let's first take a look at the big cry, and that's real estate values, okay? It's a bunch of bunk. It's always cried about that real estate values are going to crash, and Bear Development is going to be building upper end houses there. Bear Development didn't get to become the company they did by making poor decisions. So let's remember that. Let's look at Franklin's history. 76th Street, when it went to two lanes, oh my gosh, you're never going to be able to sell a house at 76th Street again, and you're killing the values. The CBRF on 92nd Street, I listened to it in my own subdivision. Oh, our property values, our property values. The Rock! Look at the Rock. Property values haven't fallen around the Rock. It's about supply and demand. And I do know two individuals that you've heard the real estate cry from. What is somebody I don't believe, to my knowledge, has any real estate experience? It's former alderwoman that seems to be playing the knot in my backyard pretty well.
It could be a not impersonal fear.
Sorry, I didn't say that.
I said former. You know what that means?
Let's not, let's...
Okay, so it's a former alderwoman, and when it was, the CBRF was going through on 92nd Street, she pushed that through, she didn't listen to the people who were concerned. And, you know, the other person who's brought this up is somebody I like personally who's a Realtor. But the facts show me, according to MLS, this Realtor in 2019 sold $338,000 worth of property in Franklin. In 2020, MLS tells me personally she sold none. In 2020 alone, I am north of $5.7 million in sold Franklin properties. So you decide who you want to listen to about what happens with property values. One of the older people brought up that jobs, only three people live here, okay? That's fine. Who cares? They're still coming here to work here. Unemployment's a bad thing no matter where it happens. Renters talking about taxes, that's a good one. And finally, a current alderwoman states on social media that she feels that the Common Council is getting beat up for somebody else's negotiations. Well, did she forget that she was in closed-door meetings for three years, as was two other members of this Common Council, talking about Strauss? So it's not somebody else's decision. That's all I have. Thank you to the Common Council and the mayor.
Uh, sir, there's a line behind me. It's not good evening. I guess you jump in if you want. Thank you.
Hi, I'm speaking on behalf of Liz Perolo at 9218 West Briarwood. And the majority of the residents breathed a sigh of relief after this project was rejected. It seems wrong that no notice was, no notice was given, we were subjected to a pop-up meeting to overturn a higher vote. Countless residents packed three rooms and spoke for hours expressing their objections. Your own fire department said they would not meet requirements to handle chemical mishap. I'd like it stated on the record that you are willing to put yourself, your family, and the citizens you swore to protect in danger. Franklin used, used to be the finishing star of Milwaukee County, or it used to be the shining star of Milwaukee County. It used to be a place where people aspired to be, as a symbol of their success, great schools, safe environment, high-end homes, and yes, recently, multimillion dollar homes. What happened under your leadership and guidance? Franklin has now become home to the dump, multiple junkyards, the quarry, the slaughterhouse, house of corruption. This is a snapshot of your legacy after having served on the board. I have a, I heard a board member express concerns about lots being developed by Bear Realty. The question out to the developer from the board was, the city of Franklin, by way of taxpayer funding, has funded the project $9 million. What is your investment to date? The developer skirted around the issue, leaving everyone to believe there was nothing invested by Bear Homes themselves. So this is the Trojan horse. You can't sell lots for $135,000 when a slaughterhouse is in their backyard. You know it, I know it. This is a Trojan horse. They're going to come back after that project starts, because there's no basement done at Bear Homes yet. They're going to come back and they're going to want to be rezoned for low-income housing. Put it on the record, mark my word, that's going to happen. I used to say, is it greed or power that overrides someone's common sense? I feel more it's appropriate to ask, is this moral? Nobody really cares about industry here, we all know that industry does survive. A slaughterhouse does not belong in the middle of a subdivision area. It doesn't.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is Joe Svechek. I reside in Waukano currently, however, I've worked in the Franklin Industrial Park for nearly 20 years, so I can personally vouch for Strauss, as well as my fellow Business Park Consortium members, that we have experienced no noise or any issues impacting the public or the businesses in the surrounding area for my tenure. Please support the growth of businesses and jobs in our community and approve the Strauss expansion, so they can continue to invest in their employees and our economy. I've known Franklin to be very business-friendly over the years, so please, Mr. Mayor, Aldermen and Alderwomen, please make it stay that way.
Thank you, Mr. Svechek.
Good evening, my name is Stephen Van Botham at S97W13172 Champion Drive, Meskego, Wisconsin. I am the present, I am the present President of the Champion Village Homeowners Association, and also have been authorized to say that I also represent Stonebridge subdivision. First off, if I may, Ms. Henningman, Ms. Willhame, Mr. Myers, I correct, is that correct pronunciation? Mr. Nelson, we all thank you for on October 20th voting no for this development. I think you realize through wisdom and insight that this belongs in a rural area. In a one-mile radius, I did my homework this weekend, we have 363 homes within a one-mile radius, you took where the plant's going to be and drew a one-day circle around it, you have approximately $120 million worth of property value that people have bought in the area, and you also have approximately 130 kids that go to school. Yes, we are in Meskego, but we are impacted greatly by this development. If you took the same project and put it on Loomis Road at Rawson in Loomis, the 50 acres, can you imagine what the reaction would be? But if you draw a radius of the homes that live within that one mile, we actually have more homes than that area does. So again, we thank you for your insight and your foresight, knowing that this is not a project that belongs in a rural area. Lastly, August of 2019, the Strauss Brands LLC changed forever. They became part of an investor firm that were purchased and became part of a major corporation. Randy Strauss and his company changed dramatically then. And if you don't think it has, then you really are naive to not realize that, but you voted no, and that's why you realize that that has changed. Especially, I guess, I was reading the articles in the paper that you were negotiating, as soon as they bought Strauss Brands LLC in 2019, they said in the articles that they were negotiating with Franklin. And then, behind your back, they went to Milwaukee and negotiated a contract that had somebody not voted against it, this facility would have been in Milwaukee. So can you trust them? That is the question.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Robert Montgomery, I live at 857716th Street. I guess my first question, which I can't get an answer for, is it going to be best two out of three? I mean, that's a fair question. I assume another Alderman can have a change of heart, and we'll run out of reasons, and we'll have another meeting. And then another Alderman, a woman, can have a change of heart, and we'll have another meeting. And then someone else can have a change of heart. And can then we do a round of things where suddenly someone changes their minds, has another meeting, and then wants to change their mind again? Can we do this forever? Is this a perpetual motion machine? So if it's two out of three, I'm fine with that. I'd just like to know the date for the next meeting, because we've already voted once no, and assume tonight we vote yes. Now, the person who's changed their mind, they were sure a few weeks ago, and if they vote yes today, are they just as sure as they were two weeks ago? Well, a reasonable person would say no, that they're what we call a flip-flopper. I don't know who the person is, but if you're sure this time, and you were sure last time, and they're diametrically opposed, one was a yes, one was a no, what makes you any more believable now? Thanks.
Good evening, I'm Dave Sorenson under the 8669 South Herewood Lane. Attorneys from Stafford Rosenbaum, Strauss Brands Special Counsel, have argued Franklin's rejection of the slaughterhouse proposal lacks facts to support its conclusion. This seems particularly surprising to me, considering the only facts lacking around this entire development are those from Strauss that we repeatedly asked for. Strauss has opted to shortcut this process at every turn, and has provided nothing other than what would be a naturally biased opinion on why they should be able to build what they want, and promises about new, untested technology, which their own attorney stated recently in the Business Journal, will limit, not eliminate, the long list of concerns that we talked about. Further complicating this process, we have government officials who have continually conducted themselves more like paid lobbyists for Strauss Insight Equity Holdings, as opposed to bipartisan elected officials trying to support the citizens they represent. And for Strauss Brands, the citizens of Franklin are not stupid by any means, it's a well-educated population. We've heard your desires and opinions repeatedly. We get it. But what is missing, as we've said time and time again, from this process, is anything substantive or factual, such as the following. There's no environmental impact study, there's no property value impact assessment, there's no feasibility study on future development adjacent to a slaughterhouse, there's no contractual clause limiting activity by Insight Equity Holdings of South Lake Texas, such as selling Strauss to WH Group of China, who operates a million-square-foot slaughterhouse in Tarfield, North Carolina. By the way, the population of Tarfield is 117. They don't have 35,000 people living in South Lake. No clause requiring any specific amount or quality level of jobs to be produced for the city's financial investment. No traffic impact study around shipping 500 paddles daily through the city to get from the freeway to the far west side of town. No logistical study on getting hundreds of employees from outside of Franklin to the rural west side of town, far again from the freeway. Strauss currently only has three employees that reside in Franklin, and obviously, few local residents are going to be clamoring to work on a kill floor when they can make the much touted wage of $15 an hour, which is the starting wage at Target. We also have no regard or reassurance from Strauss regarding their recent OSHA complaints, which resulted in a $260,000 settlement, and we don't have them saying they pledged to do better in terms of protecting their workers' health and welfare. We have no...
Over. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, folks. First, I got to say, I'm Daryl Malik, 8230 River Terrace Drive. I'm here as a citizen of Franklin, as is an owner of a Franklin business, and I've been in the business park or on the Forest Home Avenue, or another location in the business park for about 25, 26 years or so. So I'm very familiar with both Franklin and the area, and Strauss Brands. And when I say that, I'm very familiar with the name. I don't know the Straus, I've never met them, I've never talked to them. All I know is that I've driven by their plant approximately 3,000 to 4,000 times, and I have never, ever noticed a single negative effect of that plant in all the times I've been living here. I've never had one negative comment from anybody. And to me, the fundamental issue here is what really is in the best interest of the majority of the residents of Franklin. I understand the pressures, I heard it, I listened to the whole five hours last night. There's a lot of emotion, a lot of people are up in arms, a lot of people probably have never been by Strauss for very limited times. And it's a scary word, slaughterhouse automatically brings a negative temptation, but until I knew what happened there, I had no idea it was a slaughterhouse, so there's no reason to think a slaughterhouse were, is going to be proposed in a pretty isolated area with a very well-designed area. There's no reason for anybody to think that that somehow is going to change between now and when they move. So the tax impact is going to be great. As Aldermen, you are responsible to consider everybody's opinion and the tax increase in what you're, we're all on the, work together, the 3.5% is my understanding. So that's, that's a very important thing. I understand how hard this is, I understand the emotions, but I'm asking for your support of Strauss. They are a great company. There is no negative impact of everything that was just said behind me. That doesn't exist, and there's no reason to think it's going to exist at modern facility, when they made it work with a very unmodern facility. So it's just not an issue. There's no reason to expect it to be an issue going forward, and I would ask for your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jim Page. I oversee corporate attraction and expansion for the Milwaukee Seven. So if you're not familiar with M7, we're the regional economic development entity that's here in Southeastern Wisconsin. I'm here to express our appreciation to the council for reconsidering the Strauss project, and to tell you of our strong support for the project proceeding here in Franklin. Economic development is a competitive business. We've closed about 100 corporate attraction and expansion projects since we were founded in 2005. Collectively, those projects engage about 23,000 jobs here in the region, and about $3 billion of capital investment. These 105 projects come from a wide variety of different industry verticals, a lot of different things that these companies are working on, but the one thing I can tell you, they all have in common, is the competitive landscape in which those decisions were made. There's a long list of communities, both throughout the United States, as well as here in Southeastern Wisconsin, that would be very happy to have Strauss in their community. They welcome the jobs and they welcome the tax benefits that the company generates. Franklin is beautifully positioned for economic development success in the years to come. The city sits strategically within the I-94 corridor between Milwaukee and the Illinois State Line, which is an area that I spend a lot of time. Companies like Amazon, Komatsu, Uline, Haribo, Nexus Pharmaceuticals, and scores of others have made billions of investment along the corridor in the last five years. Economic momentum in this corridor is stronger than anywhere else throughout the state of Wisconsin. Saying yes to a highly reputable company like Strauss sends a clear message that Franklin values corporate investment and is open for business. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Don Dorson, I live at 8593 Lake Point Drive, here in Franklin. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I've got a procedural question. You all know my opinion on this, I spoke at the last meeting, and I don't think I need to reiterate that. But the procedural question goes back to one of the first speakers tonight who asked, who put this on the council agenda as a reconsideration? And Mayor, you said that one of the four had put that on the agenda as a reconsideration. Typically, on a council agenda, they list who put the, who brought forth the motion. And I know that there's two ways that this could get on the agenda. One is one of the four bringing a motion to reconsider, and one is the mayor, who controls the agenda, could have put it on there on speculation that one of the four will reconsider after tonight. So I think the people of Franklin have a right to know how this got in the agenda, and if it was one of the four, which one of the four reconsidered?
The answer will come when the agenda item happens.
So you're going to announce it when the agenda item comes, before you go into closed session?
Well, it'll become apparent when a motion is made.
But that will happen most likely in closed session, will it not?
I would, I would think so.
Then we'll never know. So again, I believe the people who sit here at Franklin have the right to know.
I misunderstood your question.
Who made the motion to reconsider?
No, no, the question just now.
The people of Franklin have the right to know who reconsidered. Who wasn't?
I'm certain that a motion will be made prior to closed session, is what I'm...
Okay, so then you put it on the agenda as speculation, so what you said before, that somebody reconsidered was not...
You're putting words in my mouth.
You said before that somebody reconsidered...
I'm not putting words in my mouth.
The table reflected.
Everyone will know, I'm certain, when a motion is made.
So the motion has not been made before the meeting, and one of the four has not reconsidered to this point?
A reconsideration happens when the motion is made.
I think you've answered the question by not answering the question. Thank you, Mayor.
Amy Poplar, 11856 West Ryan Road. Again, I'm an employee of the city of Franklin, but tonight I'm here as a resident. As a resident living in the 6th District and 1,500 feet away from the proposed Strauss facility, I'm here to voice my objection to any consideration for approval of their special use and expansion. Our neighborhood clearly understood that Strauss is planning to build and operate a standalone administrative and packaging facility in the Ryan Meadows Development. Overwhelming citizen resistance didn't surface until the plan arbitrarily mutated into a massive slaughterhouse. The city's website boasts enhancing, about enhancing the quality of life for present and future generations by providing economic growth through the highest quality of residential recreation... a standalone administrative and packaging facility in the Ryan Meadows Development. Overwhelming citizen resistance didn't surface until the plans arbitrarily mutated into a massive slaughterhouse. The city's website boasts about enhancing the quality of life for present and future generations by providing economic growth through the highest quality of residential recreation and business development in southeastern Wisconsin. A slaughterhouse doesn't come anywhere close to fulfilling the city's vision. Unfortunately, the Strauss scandal is being capitalized upon by businesses that have been mistreated by the city in the past. Residents truly want quality and wholesome businesses to thrive in Franklin. Furthermore, I'm not afraid to voice my opinions and oppositions. I spoke at the last council meeting regarding Strauss and our dysfunctional Ryan Creek Interceptor sewer system. I was then called into the mayor's office and interrogated for what I said. I should have never been called into the mayor's office during my work shift for something that was well within my rights to speak about. I'm a proud resident, and I will not be intimidated. The entire Strauss situation reeks of special privileges, backdoor politics, bullying tactics, and unsupervised hastily made decisions and promises. Please deny the slaughterhouse expansion request. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Is there a way to make this go down?
Take the gallop to you.
You can just kill it. Oh, killed it. Oh, smart. Okay. Could have thought of that. Oh, all right. Hello. Good evening. My name is Apollonia Cust. I reside at 10845 West St. Martin's Road. I'm speechless. I can't believe we're here again. I can't believe this is back on the agenda after all the people, with the majority of them being from the city of Franklin and nearby cities, not wanting this type of industry. And I don't know why this business has to be this one. We are not opposing growth. We're just opposing this one. There is other businesses, I'm sure, that would love to move into the area: cleaner, friendlier, better planned, better organized, more willing to be transparent about what they're offering to their community. There was no notification once again about these meetings. They're very fast, all of a sudden out of nowhere. The first meeting, I found out about it maybe a week and a half before. Now I found out about this one on Sunday and that Strauss was on it. There is not enough transparency to your community. And we are sitting here again, talking about it and asking you not to do this and asking you to listen to us. We're the ones here. We picked you. Pick us back. Thank you.
My name is Leon House, 8601 South Deerwood Lane. First off, I'd like to... Who is John Nelson, alderman of the 4th, 6th Ward?
6th District.
6th District, okay. Where this Rosie Strauss building is being built? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Address me, please.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
What I'm here about is, I was looking at the plans, and they said, the Strauss people said that there would be 18 trucks up and down Loomis. You have paperwork on that? Okay. Strauss says there's 18 semi-trucks, and there's going to be 84 utility trucks. So Loomis is going to be quite pissed. They also, on their plans, they have expansion plans. They're not here yet, but I'm warning you, they're going to build expansion. That's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Trudy Bott. I'm at 8267 South Preserve Way, Franklin, Wisconsin 5300. I'm here because I've heard a lot of residents come up last time, this time, and I think the most important thing is that this was voted no. There is a lot of residents who came in and said, "Hey, this is not the type of business we want." The reason it's changed is because there's an expansion. It's not the same business. You're not voting on the same business it used to be. That's very important to keep in mind. Franklin is not a no for businesses. We want businesses. We want respectable, reputable businesses. We want the residents to be acknowledged and heard. This is important to us. There's a lot of demographics that are changing in Franklin, and so I ask you, and I did send this out, and I wanted you to consider, we want open communication, transparency, which I feel is not happening. There's a lot of things happening that we find out later. Something like this could have been in the newsletter. I don't think it was. We also, you know, the residents come here, they want to engage, and I think if you engage them, then you'll have us on your side. You know, you have to be ready to listen to the differences. You have to listen to the oppositions. Why? And I don't know that by reconsidering that you're doing that. So that's what... And then finally, you know, we need to attract businesses. We need a stronger salesperson, whatever, to bring in the businesses that residents want. Survey the residents. Survey the residents often to know what they're looking for. So I really urge you to listen to the residents. They're an important piece of it. And I felt last time, when this was voted, that you did consider the residents. By having this reconsideration, you know, we're still in the dark. Why is this happening? So I feel like that needs addressed. The residents haven't changed their opinions. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ryan Ringwelski. I'm at 11838 West Ryan Road. So I too would like to know how many votes we're going to take on this issue, as many as it takes to get the answer we're looking for. Many of the followers on the Franklin forums think that if we're here opposing this, we are either vegan, against business, or not a resident of Franklin. Well, I'm not a vegan. I'm a business owner, and I live two blocks from the opposed site. How exactly do you think a resident with this directly impacts can vote yes to this? If it has the potential to lower house values, the potential to contaminate our wells, the potential to cause smells, yes. I understand we have two landfills and junkyards. Why not just add these to those smells? Real nice for the nearby residents. Mayor Olson, we already know you consider our side of Franklin the dunk. It's no surprise you would choose this site. You mentioned you represent over 36,000 people. Well, all of us are here tonight that live around here, and will directly affect... Clearly, your concerns don't involve us in favor shady, non-transparent deals.
Thank you. Thank you.
Nicholas Poplar, 11856 West Ryan Road. I'm here because I firmly oppose the Strauss Brands expansion. The Strauss expansion will have an unacceptable effect on our community. It may diminish property values, but it will undermine the quality of life in our vicinity. To date, not one city employee nor any elected official will guarantee that the Strauss facility will not harm, irritate, or endanger adjacent properties, public health, or the welfare of citizens. Studies regarding such concerns grossly disregarded. The proposed facility and developer are blatantly seeking special privileges, special treatment that oddly enough seems to have been promised to them by the mayor, planning or engineering staff, and commissions. Bear Development, Coopart, now Strauss Brands, contriving, once again, the spoken mirrors bait-and-switch affair in tid number six, an affair that some city staff and elected officials are enticed by, a mysterious, sketchy affair. Mayor, your actions are clearly indicative of a culpable man. You dismiss allegations of being a bully, yet last week you interrogated my wife, a city employee, in your office during her work hours for freely speaking about Strauss and our faulty sewer system at the last council meeting. Let me ask you, Steve, what was your objective? You bring Strauss and their attorney into my children's school, attempting to persuade them into reversing their objection towards the Strauss request. Again, what was your objective? ICC members, police and fire groups, numerous other civic organizations do regard you as a tyrant, throwing out verbal jabs, shaking your head when you don't get your way. Now here we are, round three of this disgraceful slaughterhouse scandal. Once again, you at the helm. Allow me to recap. The Strauss slaughterhouse expansion does not provide a desirable environment, nor does it contribute to public convenience, and it certainly doesn't contribute to the general welfare of our community and my neighborhood. Members of the common council, don't be bullied. Follow the very words on that banner. Highest-quality residential, recreational, commercial, seriously a slaughterhouse adjacent to our new junkyard? This is Franklin highest quality? I don't think so. Has it seriously come to where S.R. Mills, Bear Development, Coopart, and maybe Randy Strauss control tid number six, our environment and the future of this city? There are far better businesses Franklin should be pursuing and encouraging to expand. Deny the Strauss slaughterhouse expansion and dog it conceivable Bear got where they were by cutting corners and greasing pawns.
Nicholas Poplar. Anyone else?
Mr. Murphy. Good evening.
My name is Manu Amerk. All right. My name is Manu Amerk. I'm not a resident of Franklin, but I'm a business owner, and our business, Hurdle USA, is in the Business Park for over 20 years. Myself, I've worked in the Business Park for over 10 years, and I've driven by the facility of Strauss every day, and I also have not smelled or seen anything that would disturb me. We just finished up an expansion project this July. It went over a year. We experienced some issues with permitting through the city of Franklin, and by the help of Mayor Olson, we were able to finish the project and got back on track. And I'm just here to support Strauss in their expansion, and I hope you vote in favor of Strauss Brands. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Candy Jarvis, 10570 West St. Martin's Road. I can't believe I'm here again to talk about this again. People before me said it all once again, but I love that this fan teed that up for me so nicely. This project is not the existing project. This project is not the existing Strauss plant. This is a much bigger plant in a residential neighborhood with room for expansion. We don't want families. They want family businesses, and the existing place is doing well. That's great. They can stay there. They can move elsewhere, but Franklin has said loud and clear, we don't want it here. I hope they don't have to come back again, but I will. I'll keep coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carrie McGee, Gribar, Chaco, Chakro. I introduce myself in the language of my ancestors, the Portuguese Indians. And I'm here representing Indian Community School at 10405 West St. Martin's Road, where I'm a member of the Board of Directors. And we're also, I am a parent of a kindergarten student at this school. It is located approximately one mile from the Strauss Development, and I'd like to read to you from a letter prepared by our legal counsel. Dear Mayor Olson and members of the common council, we represent the Indian Community School and are writing to express our significant concerns and objections to the reconsideration by the common council of a special use permit for the construction and operation of a large-scale slaughterhouse by Strauss Brands. The council considered and appropriately rejected the Strauss proposal on October 20th because Strauss failed to meet the standards for approval of a permit pursuant to the City of Franklin, UDO 153.070. It has come to our attention the city may reconsider its denial of a permit at the meeting tonight. This letter continues by outlining five paragraphs of our concerns, the details of which were shared with this council on October 20th, and include in part impacts on the school's property value, safety hazards for its students staff, adverse impacts and health safety morals, comfort, and general welfare. The letter continues that it is important to note that Franklin required the school to perform both a traffic study, which subsequently limited the directional flow of all bus traffic, and a natural resources protection plan before the rezoning could occur for it to relocate to Franklin. We would have thought that if an elementary school were required to obtain these types of study and plan, a proposed slaughterhouse certainly would have been required to obtain them. There remain significant gaps and omissions in the city's review of the proposal that continue to require the council to deny the requested permit. The proposal requires further study and analysis from experts and other independent voices. Until these issues are resolved, the school cannot support the Strauss proposal and respectfully requests that the council not reconsider its correct decision to deny a special use permit. As a result, because the record is clear that the proposal does not meet the standards required, the council reconsider... If the council reconsideres and approves a special use permit for the proposal, the school unfortunately have to consider its available options. Thank you.
Hi. Danielle Kenny, 12302 West Lewis Court, Franklin, Wisconsin. It's convenient for someone who hasn't shown up to any of these meetings to now show up and question mine and a former alderperson's integrity and knowledge with all stacks and Facebook talking points. What I brought with me today are empirical studies and data. I emailed all the alderpeople studies, the studies that I found that talk about the property values and how they're impacted. Now, all of those studies were done in rural places because a facility like this doesn't exist where there's 2,000 homes within a two-mile radius. That's what we have here. A property's desirability, as you know as a licensed real estate agent, is therefore its value and traced back to the market's perception. This is not a good perception. For the most part, empirical data indicates that animal operations do create detrimental conditions to neighborhoods. Reports indicate there's a decline of between 6% and 83% depending on how far one is away from the facility. These studies were conducted, as I said, in rural towns. Based on my knowledge in the market of Franklin, the average sales price is around $320,000. Multiple studies show that homes within two miles of the animal operation decreased by about 10% to 20%, and as I said, goes up from there. Multiply that, that's a decrease in value of the average home of $64,000. Multiply that by roughly 1,800 Franklin homes in that radius, and the city can lose approximately $115 million in taxable value. Strauss is only taxed at 60% of its assessed value, which is only $42 million of assessed value. You're doing a disservice to our community by placing business above constituents' rights to use and enjoy and transfer our property, and the lack of transparency during this proposal has caused a lot of discord in our community as well as placing doubts in Franklin's voters' minds about the integrity of this leadership. Franklin deserves better. To quote the City of Cudahoga 2020 Comprehensive Plan, "A community's housing stock is its most significant long-term asset. Thereby, we must protect the value of our properties from the proposed Strauss expansion."
Thank you. Anybody else?
James Day, 8672 South 51st Street. I'd like to start off by thanking the mayor and common council for hearing this matter again. I know emotions are running high, but I am a firm believer that reasonable people can reasonably disagree just by looking at the facts, try to put motions at the door, and try to make a fair determination in terms of any project. One of the matters in which I try to evaluate is past behavior. Strauss has been in the community for quite some time. In terms of some of the worries that some of the people in the community have, a person can look at how Strauss has operated in the last 50 years to see if any of those could potentially be problems in the future in terms of... potentially be problems in the future, in terms of environmental, or smell, or noise, or property value. There are residential homes, we're close to where Strauss is right now. Strauss has been a good neighbor for us. So to think that they would be anything but that, I think, would be wrong. The one potential issue that came up during the last meeting by Alderman Hanneman, in terms of noise, I think that that would be a new dynamic, the industrial fans on top of the building, which they say is 85 decibels. I know that other projects in the area, there's been complaints about noise. I would think that that issue should be vetted out before the project's allowed to go forward, if it is decided at some point that it is going to be allowed. But at least from my point of view, I think they've been a good neighbor. I think that we should give them the benefit of the doubt, and we should allow the project to go forward. And thank you all very much for listening to everybody, and thank you.
Mr. Murphy. There's anybody in the other room that would like to speak? Please come around and get in line here at the common council. Ms. Bow.
Linda Bow, 9717 South 35th Street, Franklin, Wisconsin. Obviously, I'm here in support of the Strauss expansion. Strauss has been a great business and part of our commercial tax base for 50 years with very few complaints. Many companies who expand their businesses seek outside capital ventures to accomplish their goals. I live within three-quarter mile of the current Strauss facility and have never smelled or heard their operation, and my property value has never gone down, and my taxes are over $8,000 now. So the common council approved TID 6 back in 2018, not someone else. This real estate proximity to the landfill doesn't make it the most prime real estate in Franklin. Surely with the seniority of the council, the list must be long, but of course, when I ask, I couldn't even get a response of one other business who wanted to go in here. So in February 2020, Alderman Nelson moved to adopt a resolution for elders to do services in relation to expanding to amend the boundary of TID 6, which it was unanimous consent. So everybody was on board. Hanneman's newly elected, so don't want to speak for her. So in a janitorial sent article dated February 20th, 2020, the Strauss proposal to develop a new meat facility was being changed. This is advertised in the Journal Sentinel. This isn't something new. The common council, again, not someone else, on that Monday night, voted to change that contract between the city and Strauss on the 30 acres along Loomis Road. The minimum values would increase to $10 million and $20 million respectively for the years, if Strauss included a slaughterhouse, again, reported by the Journal Sentinel back in February. This is the amount assessment needed if the city helps to pay for the development of $9 million in infrastructure through a TID. So before all this was done, we knew it was a slaughterhouse. In May 2020, the common council adopted another resolution to approve that project plan and boundaries of TID 6. We're expanding boundaries and having millions of tax, of dollars of work completed on this TID, and now come October, we pull the rug out from underneath the anchor tenant, and we just put the City of Franklin taxpayers on the hook. This is why the City of Franklin has the reputation it has. We pretend to be negotiating and working with businesses, and then we say, "Oops, we changed our mind." If there were questions, they should have done before you approved this stuff earlier. All agreements are approved by this common council, with the exception of Alderman Hanneman, because she wasn't here. In the early 2000s, for those without seniority, the citizens of Franklin changed the automatic term from two years to three years, and it was done to prevent businesses from having to start over with a newly-elected common council every two years, so the city could get more commercial businesses interested in Franklin, and not have happened exactly what you did to Strauss two weeks ago. Apparently, I previously understated the tax increase, and now it's $1 million. It's a 4.5% increase. City's Director of Finance corrected me. So please vote yes for Strauss.
Thank you, Ms. Bow. Anyone else? Ms. Mann, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Galal Gatah. Sky eyes are running free. And my children attend Indian Community School, and I grew up at 10356 with Sequel Bulee. And I'm here to talk about something really quaint and primitive, and that's the fact that this is morally reprehensible. These are children. These are children who are physically compromised from centuries of people poisoning them, and this is the same thing here now today. Strauss is such a European-sounding name. It's perfect. If this goes through, this will be a mark, a mar on Strauss's good name, although it sounds like it's a completely different company and isn't what it was all these years anyhow. Okay? This is the number-one indigenous school in the entire world. It is leading the entire world in children regaining culture that was stolen from them. Okay? They have diabetes, they have all kinds. COVID is hitting them way harder than anyone else because we have been poisoned. Smallpox blankets. You're spitting on us in the backyard. You're polluting us. Okay? The meat industry is one of the biggest polluters of the planet. And you're going to spit on us, and this is a sacred space. It can't happen here. These are children, these are, this is where I grew up. It's a beautiful space. There's a better spot for it. Come on, you guys are creative. You're business people, you can solve this. Keep the money, keep the taxes, put it somewhere else in Franklin. Solve it. This is the wrong place. And I have, I have a seven-year-old, I have a K5er, I think she's four, I have a two-year-old, I have an infant. None of these people, except with the exception of the last woman, lived next to it, and they did not live next to a plant of this magnitude. The driving body is a totally different thing. Okay? And so if any of you, which some of you may care and some of you may well not, this is, this is the wrong thing. This is morally reprehensible, and I ask you to care. Hence, 2020, who cares about right and wrong? But it's wrong. So whatever you vote, it's wrong, and it's been said, it's on the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jan Tesler. I live at 8697 South Deerwood Lane. Is that better? Jan Tesler, 8697 South Deerwood Lane, Franklin. I emailed all of the aldermen today. I spoke to my alderman today. I left a message for Mr. Olson and never got a call back. I'm sure you're busy. I get it. Anyway, I too was curious as to why we were revoting. Obviously, this is in, on someone's main agenda. I understand that things have changed from when this started, the planning of this property for this proposal. Things have changed. I also, I was going to go over what I had put in the email. You've heard it all before. You know what all the people feel. The residents don't want this. The people who live in this area do not want this. But what I really want to talk about now is all these people who've gotten up here talking about what a wonderful company Strauss is, how they drive past their company and they don't, "Oh, I mean, it's wonderful." We're not talking about the same thing here. The new proposed building is totally different than where they're at in the industrial park. We're talking about a building and a processing plant that is going to be almost four times what they're doing now. You can't, and not only that, I'm sure the Strauss family is a wonderful family. I have no doubt. They've been doing business here for 50 years. They don't own the company. They are not the majority owners of the company anymore. We're not talking about a local business person in our community. We're talking about an equity firm out of Texas. Do we have anything written in this where they cannot sell it? We don't, that I know of. No one has at least told any of us this. The person who got up before talking about the studies and all this, that we, you could have required of Strauss, you didn't do that, as far as we know. If you did, I'd like to know. I'd like to know if you required it. I'd like to know why we're doing a revote when it was voted no, my understanding, because they didn't meet the requirements for a special use permit. So what has changed? Did they meet those requirements now? Did they do everything they were supposed to do? No one, you know, you haven't informed us. And the word transparency has been brought up many times tonight already, and that's the thing. There's no transparency. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. For those of you out in the hallway in to speak, it'd be better if you kind of started and come in rather than wait out there in the process of, well, if you're a little closer to the microphone.
Hi, my name is Samir Manta. My address is 4700 on Goodway in Brookfield. You might wonder why this guy from Brookfield is here to talk at the Franklin Common Council. The answer is simple. We do not want a slaughterhouse in Franklin, Franklin, but also we do not want in the greater Milwaukee area. We have been closely watching this contentious topic, and we were so happy that Strauss was rejected. It is absurd to me that this is back for reconsideration in a few days when nothing has changed. Is there a reason why Franklin officials are not listening to the residents? Why are you not listening to my friends who live here? Today I'm here, tomorrow there are more people will come here with us and just oppose this idea and this resolution. For this, because we care about the community, and I do care about my friends who live here and around here. And mainly, I care about the innocent animals who may be, who will be sacrificed for the Strauss to fill up the bank account. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Deepak Aujar, residing at 6828 South Julian Avenue. In our last meeting, I came and spoke. The only point that I was infecil was not the issue with the business, but with the business location. So I'm putting that point again and again, is why we are giving the Franklin brand to the business that none of the resident want to use. Are the Strauss paying more taxes or creating more jobs than other people? I don't, other businesses. So are we shortage of having any offer from some other businesses, like any grocery or any other stores, right? So if there is real estate shortage, then I don't know. Right now, everybody is looking for a good community to grow their business. I will just give an example. Say, in my home, say I have two car garages. I bought first car, and it was, say, $30,000 car. And then, after a few days, I got a good car in more reasonable price. But I can't put it or buy a new one because I already purchased that one, and I give my home spot or land. With this example, what I'm trying to say is it is difficult to get rid of something which you already own. You have a limited land. Suppose there are 10 of the businesses that you can think about, and if one business is accommodated by this guy, this company, then you are, you can say, avoiding or stopping in future any other good business. So I don't think that is a good, wise decision, because it is, you can get in them, but it is difficult to get out, right? It's not once in a while, or a key or lease or something. Obviously, as our Franklin resident, everybody is impacted. Say, I don't come out much due to this COVID situation with the kids at the house, but this is the second time with this large gathering, right? Why we are coming out here, it's all more emotional grounds also with these kinds of businesses. So I hope you all have your family, everybody knows, so consider this Franklin as your family and see what impact we have, okay? So just think about that, and you may get good businesses in future. Franklin is not a place that nobody wants to go. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Dan Schott, 4011 80th Street, Kenosha, Wisconsin. I am the Development Manager for Bear Real Estate Group, and we are the owner and master developer of Loomis Business Park, Ryan Meadows Subdivision. Since 2017, we have invested a considerable amount of time, effort, and resources into this project to ensure a high-quality development. We respectfully request the city council's support of the reconsideration and granting the Strauss Brand specialty experiment. The Strauss project is the anchor of Loomis Business Park and a critical catalyst for the success of the project. Based on the project location, existing zoning, site engineering, and traffic studies, the Strauss Brands proposal is ideally located. Denying this project would be detrimental to the expected tax increment of the district, the viability of future users of Loomis Business Park, and would negatively impact the local economy and the Franklin taxpayers. Bear Real Estate Group owns the balance of the development, including property on three sides of Strauss parcel. Based on the Strauss Brands site and operational plans, we firmly believe that the Strauss use will not have a negative impact on Loomis Business Park, Ryan Meadows Subdivision, or the general area. Because we are neighbors, we thoroughly vetted the Strauss Brands' use and potential impacts prior to the land sale to protect the success of the overall project. The entire development has been carefully planned and programmed to accommodate Strauss Brands as a compatible use in the development. The residential component, Ryan Meadows, is separated by distance, landscape berms, and a 22-acre natural area. We continue to receive strong interest from local builders for available home sites and do not believe sales pricing or velocity will be affected by the Strauss project. We strongly encourage the reconsideration of the Strauss Brands' proposal for the benefit of the entire Franklin community, including those businesses that are considering making a future investment in the City of Franklin. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dolit Rohr, I'm a friend of Shane. I'm not here to talk about the religious or the economic or the political reasons why we shouldn't allow this. I'm here to talk about why I sort of disagree with the ethics of this organization in question. The land that they are proposing this to be built on is a M1 industrial that helped knock 50% of the value of the tax bill. And over the past three years, this organization has come under scrutiny for several issues, and they failed to acquire proper permit from MMST and DNR to properly treat, to have proper treatment systems in place. And it feels to me that this organization has failed to be transparent, and they lack the integrity in being transparent. I want you all to know that we value our businesses, and we want to empower businesses to expand and come to Franklin, but we can't really get behind, I personally can't really get behind a company that has severely absent what they claim to be their core values with the visitor actions. So I would ask you all to reconsider my view. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at 8697 South Deerwood Lane. I'm here to hope that the common council votes again against this. One of the reasons is because although Strauss may have been a great neighbor and a great business in the City of Franklin for 50 years, they kind of showed their true colors when they tried to make a deal in Milwaukee, and when that failed, now they're back here. The second thing is somebody had brought up Cudahy earlier. I'm also remembering up Cudahy as well. I don't know if anybody on the common council and mayor remembers the fire that happened at the Patrick Cudahy plant in July of 2009. That was not a fault of the business. However, during that fire, there were anywhere from, I did a little research, anywhere from 2,000 However, during that fire, there were anywhere from, I did a little research, anywhere from two thousand to five thousand gallons of anhydrous ammonia that leaked out, resulting in a fourteen-hour forced evacuation of residents living within a one mile square, or one mile radius of the fire site. I certainly didn't move to Franklin to have a business go up where something may happen with the amount of chemicals that the fire department in this city has already said they can't take care of and then look forward to possibly being evacuated from my home should anything happen at the Strauss plant. If it does go up or I have to be evacuated for anywhere from, you know, one to fourteen or longer hours, I did not move here for that. You can check back July fifth, two thousand nine. The air and fire started by some goofball that lit off a military flare that landed on the roof, started the plant on fire, resulting in a fire that well over thirty fire departments had to come to. I lived in Milwaukee at the time and I could hear fire trucks from Wasaki County coming to Cudahy to fight the fire. We don't need that here if the fire department isn't able to handle something like that at this time.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes, sir.
It just so happens, now, nobody called me a bully, right? It just so happens that we happen to have a Cudahy fire chief who was the commander of that fire here.
Okay. Can you confirm that it was a fourteen-hour evacuation?
Chief, excuse me. Chief, please. Hold on, let me phone you. Hold on.
City was evacuated for the potential leak. We thought there was a leak occurring. There was a threat of a leak occurring. That's why the city was evacuated. It was evacuated proactively to protect the citizens of the community. The leak didn't occur to anywhere near what you're suggesting.
Well, I read that from an EPA report.
The rest of the fire is what took the time to put out. It was a very complicated fire, very complicated building, a very large building. And it did take several hours and a lot of firefighters to put out, but it wasn't because of the ammonia. And this is not a reflection of my in favor of this project or not in favor of this Strauss project today. I'm just telling the facts that there was not that great a leak of the anhydrous ammonia. That was, it was a threat and that's why the community was evacuated proactively for their protection. The fire is what took the time. A very large old building, very large fire, extremely large and very complicated. That's what took the time. It wasn't the anhydrous ammonia. And again, this is not a reflection of whether I'm in favor or not in favor of Strauss. I'm just saying I had to correct that. It's not because that sudden leak occurred.
Apparently, the report that was filed with the EPA by an onsite gentleman was obviously a lie because I reported this to that anywhere from two thousand to five thousand gallons of anhydrous ammonia had leaked out. And that was the cause of the evacuation. So, okay, someone somewhere has filed suit.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name's Annette Duncan. I live at one oh three five six West Steeple De Lane, so within the circle that was talked about earlier. I have been an English professor for thirty-three years and I've always said that it's narrative that's going to change the world, not so much fact. So I want to start with a couple of quick stories for you. One is tomorrow, it will be twenty years to the day since my family and I purchased our wonderful home, our family home. We raised our seven kids there. It's been fabulous. We were asked by my husband's business just to move within the parameters of Milwaukee County. They had that whole place to choose from. We chose Franklin. We chose Franklin because of its reputation and its beauty. We chose Franklin because everybody knew it was a desirable, wonderful place to live, and it has been. Let me tell you another story. I was out in LA a few years ago and doing laundry, probably team mind, but doing laundry. And another guy was in there doing laundry. And after a while, we just talked because it gets awkward, right? So we started talking. He was an educator pursuing a grant from Australia. He'd been across the nation looking at indigenous schools. And he said he had one more, which was the top school to, to go to out of all of his research worldwide. We got to talking and he guessed it, it was Franklin Indian Community Center. I'm so proud. That project was within a mile of my home. Nowadays, my own grandchildren attend Indian Community School. And it's a fabulous place. You, you know, I don't know how to tell you. So this project, this vision, ICC, brought enduring benefit to countless lives. This slaughterhouse project is diametrically opposed in vision to that sort of Franklin that we've all known and loved. I'm in leadership too, where I teach and other places. I understand the pressures that you're under and get it. I also understand the potential that each one of you has tonight to make a huge difference in the trajectory of our community. I tell my students, my freshmen when they come, that their choices that first year are sort of like adjusting a redder to go across the lake. It may feel like an imperceptible little choice, but the trajectory where you end up is very different based on the choices that you make. I implore you, it's a strong word, but it's from heart, implore you tonight. For homeowners, for residents, for the so many countless people who would be here if they knew, if they understood, set the redder in the right direction. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Manish Trapp, eighty-two thirty-two South Reserve Way. I want to say three things. Why is the voice of the citizens of Franklin not being heard by having a second vote? Secondly, why is the common council holding this vote in the middle of a pandemic that is out of control in the state of this council? And lastly, the lack of transparency, accountability, and responsibility of this common council is upon. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is David Duncan. I live at one oh three five six West Steeple De Lane. I want to say I am against this. Let me ask any of you, have you ever worked at a slaughterhouse? Because I have, and I can tell you what happens. And I'm concerned about the lack of transparency. I am concerned that our mayor has called an employee in because at the slaughterhouse I worked at, when a woman's hand was crushed off, I got called in and they attempted to intimidate me to tell me that what happened while I was there and witnessed it didn't happen. Eventually, the truth came out. There are obviously people and there's money involved here. But this is not the same company that came in and was family-owned. I'm happy that we have a small plant in a business park. Go throughout the United States, big plants are out in rural areas for a reason. Some of it is the pollution and it will be the smell. It will be. It may be contained a little bit now, but if this expands, you have not been there, I have. This is not what we came to Franklin for. It will affect property prices. Money speaks. I think at this school that we have indigenous people, we have violated something like three hundred and seventy-five treaties with our Native American people. We have built something here in Franklin that is worth saving. Or we could drive them out again. Where this time and for what? In Europe, one of the things that happens is they attempt to wear the citizenry down by voting again and again and trying to change the language. If you want the book on that, Daniel Hannan's book, The New Road to Serve Them. It's a relooking at how the European common market has dealt with socialism. And it has robbed the citizenry of their rights to be heard in Europe. His plea for us as Americans is to do what we're doing here tonight and to stop bureaucrats from overriding the will of the people. Now, you can override the will of the people. Why would you? Do you not, do we not count? Do the Native Americans not count? Does the pollution not count? At what point do we just shut up and now we get arrested and pulled out because we disagree with you? Where will this end? How many times has it's already been said? I mean, I'm terrified that there's a lack of transparency. The list of studies that have not been completed should concern us all. Why do we have one standard for Native American schools and a different for slaughterhouses?
My name is Alfonso Salinas, residing at eighty-five ninety-three South Deerwood Lane, Franklin. This is very repetitious. Everybody knows that the citizens of Franklin does not want a slaughterhouse. My concern is the health of the children, my grandchildren and the children surrounding the area of the slaughterhouse. I don't want the children or the senior citizens with health problems. How many of you people live around within a two-mile radius of the slaughterhouse? Can I see the hands? One. One out of how many? Everybody else is voting for it. Nobody, do you guys seem to consider the health of the residents of the city of Franklin? My opinion is no slaughterhouse. And don't forget, gentlemen and ladies, that you work for the citizens of Franklin. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. This is Karishman Singh. I live in nine four two seven South Southwood Court, Franklin, right on Ryan Road. So I was here last time when you were talking about this voting about ten days back. And I was happy that I was part of the decision-making process and my opinion was heard and, you know, my kids were happy that I came here and I put my opinion here and they were happy to see the vote was no. But then all of a sudden yesterday I came to you from one of my friends that there's another vote happening. So that's why I came here again today. And last time I talked about how the air quality and I brag about their quality when I talk to my family back in India. I have lived in Milwaukee area for the last sixteen years. I work in Rustine, I used to live in Greenfield back in two thousand six. And I researched a lot of areas in the neighborhood to see where I want to put my family. And in two thousand ten, I decided to build a house here in Franklin because this was a neighborhood where the schools are good. My family, I have two kids, they go to Franklin's school. So that's the reason why I put, or build a house here. But now, you know, like with this slaughterhouse coming, one thing is property value, which may go down, the quality. And who really you want to come to a community where there's a slaughterhouse in the, in the residential area? Like, does anybody of you guys want to live in an area where the, where the slaughterhouse is there in, you know, one mile radius? I don't think so, not me definitely. So, you know, like, and we are, last time I think that there was one more proposal that was discussed before this meeting about residential development property right north of that area. And they were talking about the lot price of hundred and thirty-five thousand per lot in that neighborhood. So once they know that there's a slaughterhouse coming just south of it, is anybody going to buy a land there for hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars? Who's going to, who's, who's, who will want to build a house there right next to the slaughterhouse? So that will reduce the land price there. It will reduce the taxes. You'll have to offer it at a discount, which will reduce the taxes. Eventually, it will, you know, reduce the property value overall. So, you know, I think, I don't know why we are doing this again, but that's fine, you know, I think that. And another thing was about the businesses. Again, no issues with the business coming to area, definitely want business. There are a lot of businesses that are in open, which are, you know, like, which have come recently. And you can see a lot of, you know, technological businesses, manufacturing businesses, those can come in the area. Like Amazon has come, so there's, there's no opposition to that. But slaughterhouse, I live right on Ryan Road. I know the trucks might be coming, the proposal for trucks to come is on the Loomis Road, but it might come through Ryan Road. So that's, that's my position. Thank you.
This is Prashant Kotari. My address is eighty-eight fourteen West Marshford Court, Franklin, Wisconsin. Happy Halloween, Strauss, Randy, and Jerry. Nice try scaring us with the letters from the attorney. Your tricks are not going to work here in Franklin, but give it a try at one of the haunted houses and see if it works there. At the last meeting, orderman Dan Meyer said Strauss lost the loyalty card with Franklin. However, Strauss also lost our trust by giving us false information, incomplete information, and hiding information from the Franklin residents. Randy Strauss, you're probably not here. If you are, listen. Please stop using the cheesy language because you, you are saying you care for the animals and the city of Franklin. But we can all see that your words don't reflect in your actions. You told us you would continue to be in this business until people eat meat. We told you loud and clear, Milwaukee, Cudahy, and Franklin doesn't want you, doesn't want you. Mayor Olson, please listen. Do you ever go back and watch the recordings of the common council meetings? You showed disturbing behavior, not towards the people of, not only towards the people of Franklin, but towards the elected officials at the last council meeting. You always tell us, audience, that you have important business to do. Is Strauss the only important business to do in Franklin? We come back here week after week, week after week, and we don't have a decision here. I thought we made the decision, everything was behind us. Did we elect you so that you can act on, as an agent of Strauss? Let me remind you, it doesn't make you better because you tell us that you've lived in Franklin longer than Marcelino and me. No, you haven't. You are washing away your thirty-five to forty years of career, political career in Franklin because of your ego, your ridiculous behavior and your bad decisions. We, the citizens of Franklin, have made it clear that we do not want Strauss in this neighborhood. You are not only disrespecting the citizens, but also the common council members who already made the decision on this topic. Please remove Strauss from today's meeting agenda. We do not want the closed-door meeting at all. Please remove it from the agenda. Where are all the members of the Franklin Business Park Consortium? You, the president, here. We appreciate you doing business or in our city.
We stress yourself.
We do not, I can, I can talk to whoever. We do not appreciate you supporting a business like Strauss who led ethics and integrity. In my opinion, please don't interrupt me. In my opinion, you may want to keep your distance from Strauss because you are putting your business credibility online. Strauss has given so much of false information on the record. It will come back and bite you all. Any parties who are supporting Strauss carries a legal and reputational risk.
Put your mask on.
I will.
Put your mask on and you're done.
My apologies for my outburst.
You know, just before you stood up, I was going to say, well, I want to appreciate the way everybody was talking and acting tonight. Does it get good evening?
Good evening.
Hold on one second.
Good evening. David Gant, nine zero one West Clubman Lane. I'm kind of surprised we're here again. I think five hours of a meeting should have displayed the public's concern about this project. So the threat of litigation should not make people reconsider their votes. If there were promises made by the common council or other members, there is an insurance policy with the city of Franklin that would cover such negligence and it should not be on the verge of the tax cuts and it should not be pushing people to make decisions that... And it should not be pushing people to make decisions that, obviously, they had made a decision that supported the larger population of the city of Franklin. The tax base of the residential districts are much more than any business properties that you have in the city. We should have the say, we should have more input in catering your ideas to the developers. And as far as like the ozone scrubbers being at eighty-nine decibels and above, I know from experience, and yes, I do live near the Rock Sports Complex, that's approved at seventy-nine decibels, that in my house, throughout the winter, I can hear the snow machines and snow making machines inside my house all night long. Okay? Residential districts are supposed to be at fifty-five decibels. I can hear the snow machines in my house. It sounds like someone is mowing my front yard at three in the morning all night long. If that's what you guys want to approve, that's what's gonna happen at Strauss. For miles around the development, where is the environmental impact statement? Where is the comprehensive SOM study? Where's the study that show that there's not going to be a decrease in property values? Because that is the impact that I've survived around the Rock Sports Complex, as well as a thousand other people. I think you can do a better job this time and actually do your jobs, invent this project better. And it should not be revisited. It should be taken off the agenda. So the tax increment district that you're creating is for twenty years. So this obviously has a very long-term impact. It's not a decision that should be made easily or unjust, or just because you're getting forced to do something. It should be something that you consider that goes for generations and generations. And let me know if you would sell your house and move next to the slaughterhouse. That's a question you should ask yourself before you vote on this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gill. One second. For the record, Alderman Barber is last to see the eight or two.
Good evening, council members. My name is Rajiv Sarana. I live at thirty-seven fifty-four West Cypress Lane. Dear council members, we have elected you to build the future of Franklin, not destroy. There are various studies being done at various universities all over the United States that right from every state, from Iowa to Kansas to Nebraska, wherever the slaughterhouse or the meat processing industry has been built, most of the cities have been doing it. There are illegal immigrants, you know, there are a lot of violences, violations. I think there are various studies which have been done at various universities. Why we are bringing this, you know, to Franklin? I was just listening to a conversation last week. My daughter and five of their friends, they were sitting. And one of the girl brought up the point that, hey, Franklin is building, you know, a slaughterhouse. And one of the girl immediately pointed out, it's like, oh, my God, we have a jail, we have a quarry, we have now a slaughterhouse? Just think about it that the little kids, those will be the future of this community. They are thinking about that, how bad it is having a slaughterhouse in the community. So if you think about meat processing industry, I talked this about last time, they've always employed, you know, illegal immigrants. We just heard from Strauss that they had fired thirty-one employees, those who worked from twelve to seventeen years in their plant because they were illegal immigrant. Why it took seventeen years for Strauss to find out that they were illegal immigrant? You're thinking about bringing the job, isn't it? They're taking away the American jobs here? We're thinking that they're gonna bring up the jobs, but when we see that the slaughterhouse, there are all the illegal immigrants are working. So I request you to vote no, because this is not good for community, this is not good for future of Franklin. I think this is a very affluent community. All the people, all the, you know, citizens here would not like, you know, having a slaughterhouse, which is more close to their neighborhood and, you know, bring the whole community down. So thank you, and I would like to request everybody to vote no for this.
Thank you, Raj. Next?
That's it.
Okay. You know, you guys.
Yeah, make your moves, because I'm not gonna.
They're right. Levenduski, eighty-thirty West Winston Way. This name Strauss is not the same company that is gonna build this expansion. So why are we going along with that name? It might have been a good name, it still is a good name, but it's involved with another business. And that business is a completely different situation, and we should not be taking it for granted. We don't want this thing in our city. For instance, we put a new sewer through the city. What happens? This thing come all the way to my house. Now they got some filters or something like that. And if that can travel that far, the slaughterhouse can travel that far. I get the smell from the hill, the landfill on some mornings. It's bad, but I want these people that are here, you people living in the city, you're supposed to protect us. You're supposed to do good for us, not bring in another company that we don't even know. We need your vote to say no to Strauss. Thank you.
Mr. Rivera, please.
Howie, Marcelino Rivera, five-five-three-six, West Alwood Drive. I've written a lot, and I don't know how to concise sixty-three days of information that I've been researching into three minutes. You guys have given Strauss Brands multiple opportunities to come here and speak for hours on end. And here, we're limited to three minutes. Not only that, but there are multiple people that I gave you their emails last time that could not attend or were worried and concerned about attending a meeting to make their voices heard. And they've been silenced by their emails. You called them back and assured them that this was a done deal ahead of time. Ahead, yes, you have, Mayor. And the attacks are endless. So I want to talk about, I'm just gonna go through some of these emails and some of the things. I've, I've written things before, but now I'm just gonna go off the cuff because now you got a different hairstyle from me that people can criticize. Now you got a different look. So here it goes, different, different approach. Based on this, this is someone else's statement. Based on this, I request our city attorney provide any and all financial records regarding dealings between Strauss Insight Holdings and city of Franklin as soon to be named forensic accountant, who can utilize said material to determine who is actually behind the multiple LLCs involved with the development of the Loomis Business Park and uncover the financial history of what has gone on over the past several years. Also, should the slaughterhouse proposal vote a trial, I request any additional detailed information through discovery be made available to all Franklin residents since they essentially form what would be the defendant in this case, the city of Franklin. Uh, let's see. From my attorney, she said, the additional information that I obtained from Alderman Barber should have been submitted by Strauss prior to their application. But now, here it is, they're using the, they're using the reconsideration to essentially work around the U D O and get another application process. So now they've supplemented the record not only once, but they did this before, after the October eighth hearing. Where is Randy Strauss? The man that said he didn't want to make his home in, in a city that didn't find him as a benefit? How many people have come here on October eighth, on October twentieth, and today send you emails, called, and multiple times, and let you know that they do not want any benefit? So how is that doing the right thing, as you called it, Mr. Bucin, having integrity? That is not having integrity, avoiding the voices of the people that give you power. Do not let this go through. This, this should not be on the agenda, and I ask that all council members refrain from entering closed session. Let, let me just finish, last sentence. The residents of Franklin deserve to be treated with respect, and their financial contributions allow our city to be what it is. You need to stand with the people once again, and do not allow this reconsideration. Please and thank you.
Hello. I'm Elena Collins, and I live at eight-six-two-eight South one-hundred-sixteenth Street here in Franklin. To those who may be in favor of the slaughterhouse, are you doing this according to your own self or according to the people whom you say you are for? You say you are for the people, but the majority of the people living in the area of the slaughterhouse do not want this processing plant to be built here. And yet you are trying to push this on to us. I suspect if you tried to put this slaughterhouse through in any other district in Franklin, you would get a similar reaction from the people, such as what happened in Milwaukee. You say you are for the people, but so far, almost every action you've taken has not had the people in consideration. A few years ago, you tried to have a bicycle trail built on one-hundred-sixteenth Street, my street. The majority of the people obviously did not want that. And yet, you took them on a long journey of meetings, and everyone's time was wasted. In both scenarios, the bicycle trail and the slaughterhouse, both are unsafe for the population. How can we know that this plant will not pollute our livelihood, our ground, our water, our air? The plant will destroy the natural beauty of this area. The majority of the people do not want this happening. How do you, how do we know you really are for the people when you won't even listen to the majority? I must ask, for whom are you doing this? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Hirsch. I reside at seventy-eight sixty-seven South Eighty-third Street in Franklin, Wisconsin. As reported by the Business Journal, November first, Strauss and its attorneys wrote the city of Franklin letters on Thursday requesting reconsideration. This reconsideration seems out of order, as only one of the four voting older persons who voted to deny the special use permit on May twentieth may put forth a motion to reconsider this matter. What is interesting and should be noted here is that the only person who has had long conversations with Strauss privately is the mayor. Did the mayor make commitments and promises to Strauss, which he had no authority to make? Is Strauss reacting to private commitments not met? This would expose the city to liability. If this is the case, the common council should demand to be informed of what was said and promised, and of any commitments made during those meetings. If the mayor did not did this without the authority of the common council, they should demand that the mayor resign for putting the city in a dangerous situation. Those promises and commitments by the mayor would be illegal and non-binding on the city. That's abusive power, abusive office by the mayor. If true, the city is not responsible for the actions committed illegally as the, as the mayor would not have been acting in his official capacity. If the mayor succeeds in an attempt to get the common council to cover his backside and honor any private commitments, then today will be a sad day for Franklin. I urge the common council to push to the reconsideration items stricken from tonight's agenda. Additionally, considering all this, including the endangerment to the lives of Franklin residents by conducting multiple large meetings throughout the height of our current pandemic, according to Wisconsin Statute Section seventeen point one-two I A, or one A, elected city officials may be removed from office for cause by an affirmative vote of three fourths of all members of the common council. Wisconsin Statute Section seventeen point one-six, the procedures for removal requires the filing of written charges by a resident taxpayer in a public hearing before the common council. The term cause is defined as inefficiency, neglect of duty, official misconduct, or malfeasance in office. In my opinion, based on this, I request the city attorney guide the remaining council members in scheduling a public review and vote as to whether Mayor Olson, Alderman Deandra, and Alderman Bear's behavior rises to the level of neglect, inefficiency, misconduct, and malfeasance required by the statute, the required written documentation asking for this to be forthcoming.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I want this added into the record.
Give it to, um, Ms. Eno.
Thank you.
Ms. Collins, good evening.
Good evening. Darlene Collins, eighty-six twenty-eight South one-hundred-sixteenth Street, and I've been there for thirty-five years. Well, here we are again, and nothing has changed. I'm still opposed to the slaughterhouse. You did the right thing two weeks ago. You stood up for the people you represented, and you stood up for the laws of our city. You did right by the people of Franklin, and I will ask you to once again stand up for the people. I'd like to remind you of the hundred-and-fifty people who came to the public hearing and of all the people who spoke at the public hearing and at the last common council meeting, where the majority of the people who spoke were opposed to the slaughterhouse. In addition, I'd like to remind you that over the past month, you have heard from people all across the city of Franklin, not just District Six people. They spoke out when they called you and texted you and emailed you. And I ask you, how many of those people were opposed to the Strauss building and how many were in favor? Over fifty-one hundred people signed a petition opposing the slaughterhouse. And a good percentage of those people who signed were Franklin residents and Muskego residents. So I ask you again to follow the rules that govern our city. According to U D O Section fifteen dash three point zero seven zero, the burden of proof was on Strauss. And Strauss still has not proven that the development will not have undue adverse impacts on the adjacent property, the character of the area, or the public health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare. And Strauss has not proven that our property values will not diminish. My house is my retirement money. Big business has no right to ruin my future, or possibly my family's health, or my neighborhood. Maybe I'm naive, but I grew up learning that people are more important than money. The people have spoken out and are looking to you to support them and their families and their homes and our welfare. So I ask you once again to please do the right thing and stand up for the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Anyone else?
Good evening. Patrick Leon, seventy-eight thirty-six, West Winston Way. I am a member of the Plan Commission as well as the Board of Zoning and Building Appeals. I'm on the record supporting this project. I was a member of the Plan Commission, and I have talked to most of the members of the council about my support. I am asking you to support it. My alderman is Dan Mayer, and I am specifically asking you as constituents to support this plan for all the reasons that I believe were answered during the Plan Commission process, the most recent common council meeting, and the letters that Strauss has sent, the tour that I took as Strauss, the questions that they answered from constituents, from residents in the city. I think that they have been a good neighbor. I think they're a good corporate system, and I think that they have shown that they will continue to work with not only the city, but their neighbors to make sure that this is a good project that benefits Franklin and the district. One of the things that I noticed tonight, and Mayor alluded to it earlier, is that there's been a very respectful approach to this tonight, and I appreciate that. I appreciate that from opponents, and I appreciate that from supporters. I think it's important in this room and in this city to remain respectful. I don't believe that anyone on the council, whether you support or oppose, is acting in negligence, is acting in a criminal way. I believe you're in a tough situation. It's, it's an issue that has a lot of opponents, and opposition to something is something that is very empowering. And so you've got to make a decision based on all the factors presented before you. And I did email you all earlier today, and I remind you that, not to give a civics lesson here, but you're elected to use your judgment. You're elected to listen to everything that comes in and then use your judgment. If your judgment tells you that this is good for the city, if this is good for the district, then I encourage you to support it. then I encourage you to support it. The stability matters, and remaining open to another perspective than your own matters. Although I support it, I have remained open to the opponents and their, their reasons for their perspectives on opposing it. And then, a final point on it. Again, I believe Strauss has done a good job being a good and responsive corporate citizen. There are no guarantees, or there are few guarantees in life, and I believe that to ask them to guarantee some of the things that some residents have asked is just simply not possible. With that, I thank you, right in three minutes.
I'm Susan Robbie, the CEO of the Conservancy, and I am here also as the reigning Business Leader of the Year for Franklin. I believe I still hold that title from last year. And I want to start off with that, because the Conservancy project took about 20 years to bring to fruition. And I joined the organization as its leader about four years ago. It has not been a fun ride for me, and I've done work with Milwaukee, a lot of work inside of Milwaukee politics. A lot of us in the business consortium talk often, monthly, about the commitment that we have to this community. Now, the Conservancy brings something wonderful to the community of Franklin that I hope offsets some of the things about our lives that are not so great right now. I save people from suicide probably once a week. There's really, really a community that is not only hurting, but also in need of healing. But I'm also a smart businessperson, and we wouldn't have gotten as far as we have if it wasn't for business leaders. The Board of Directors stuck with this project and stuck with Franklin through this whole time, almost 20 years. I'm also the daughter of a meat cutter, a man who did this very work for Kohl's for 40 years. And I had a talk with my dad on the way here tonight to ask him what he thought. And I was a little girl going in the meat department. On 27th and Grange was the store my dad mainly worked at. And I saw the carcasses. My dad took that meat and prepared it, and we all enjoyed it. But he said, "Susie, this is a sacrifice that these animals are making for us." And I said, "Dad, but look what we're talking about." And he said, "It's easy to get emotionally caught up in what this business is, but at the end of the day, Franklin needs a balance between business and resident. Income, taxes, it can't survive without that." And so as the CEO of a new business in Franklin, and we are having a huge impact in the community and beyond, bringing in regional folks, I want the responsibility of the common council. It's a responsibility factor around the decisions that you make and thinking about the future. Thank you. Yep.
You all can't be last. Mr. Ryan wants to be last. Mr. Zimmerman wants to be last. So I'll make you all last and post this to the public. All right. See, no one come forward.
Mr. Seymour, good evening, Don.
I'm Don Seymour, 8830 South 116th. I have one thing to say. No slaughterhouse in Wisconsin, in Franklin. We have one Foxconn, which is a pain in the butt, and it's going on forever. If you approve this, you'll have a corner in your side for many, many years to follow. I tell you, do not approve.
Thank you, Don. Good evening, David.
Steve, members of the common council. I come here to tell you a story, but before I get to the story, I want to... Hazel Ryan, 5215 West South Cunningham Road. That's right down the street to the current Strauss. I wasn't going to make comments and people all saying the things, but I will say this, and I disappointed someone from Strauss isn't here, because for years, I owned property on 60th Street, and their big semis come down a road that's a three ton and has a sign and everything else. And I've complained, and to this day, I haven't gotten a call back. That being said, I want to address this comment to the common council. Steve and I battled many, many years ago. And when people come for the business park, I used to represent those people, and I represented the residents. And I can tell you that those business people had issues with companies that were coming into the business park. A lot of people forget, we have an industrial park that was 60th Street, then we have a business park. I lost an election because Mr. Olson put out a flyer that says Alderman Ryan will cause the city millions of dollars in a lawsuit. What he was talking about was, we had a trucking company that wanted to come into the business park. The business owners did not want it. The residents did not want it. The city represented it, some of which Mr. Olson and the colleagues of his did. We went into a closed session, just like you're going to do shortly, and I hope not. At that closed session, I was told that we have members of the company out there. We have their attorney. If you don't vote for this, to that date, there's better property that has gone in with buildings in there. The point I'm trying to make is Mr. Olson pushed for that company to sue the city. That company did sue the city. And Mr. Wazalowski will tell you that when it went to court, it never went to trial because the judge ruled that the city had a right to make...
I'd like the people to know that our mic isn't working in the background.
Yeah, it's locking up. Here it goes.
And I'd like you to say it again.
No.
That's too bad, because we don't know what went on. Somebody happened by mistake to turn off the mic.
The mic was turned off.
When did it turn off?
The mic was turned off when he was speaking.
I'm just asking, when did it turn off?
When he started speaking.
Sir, I'm asking, I'm trying to fix the problem. Can you tell me when it turned off?
When he started speaking was the answer. I just heard it. Everybody else could hear it.
Folks, I'm just trying to fix the problem.
I was in there when I came over here. He said, "Starting when he started, I'm starting my story about industry with murals."
Okay, now, did anybody see me touch anything? Did anybody see me touch anything?
He has a right to be heard.
Did anybody see you touch anything?
He has a right to be heard.
Okay, so I didn't turn it off, okay? We all agree to that. The mayor didn't shut him up.
No software crashed and I had restarted.
The director of IT just said the software crashed, so apologies from the city. It happens. See, there, just recycle any. This is going to be the last. See, no one come forward.
This report wasn't designed for three-hour sessions.
I'm going to close the public hearing. We're in a sense of commentary. Okay. In your packet on B2 is a letter that's going out with my signature, requesting the federal representatives from Milwaukee County, who are part of securing some more COVID money that will support the various COVID activities, including contact tracing and other activities, beginning two days ago, on the ICC letter.
Well, I have concerns that we're asking for more money when we're actually sort of sitting here creating some of the problem. We were supposed to get some new equipment in so we could start doing Zoom. I think we're one of the only communities that are still doing in-person meetings. So if you're asking for contact tracing, we're already overwhelmed, and here we are holding a meeting with a lot of people, so that concerns me. I just want to make that point. Thank you.
Okay. Next item on your agenda is approval of regular common council meeting.
Move the table October 6th one more time.
Your second. To the next meeting. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? October 6th. To the next meeting. I don't recall what the issue was. Hold on, do you think?
I'm going to move the table there. Move the table there.
Hold on, you guys got to wait. We got to turn the microphones on here. Hold on a little.
What do you want to take a vote on?
Wait, first, Alderman, Mayor, what was the issue on October 6th?
There was correction to be made, and the city clerk has been so busy this week with the election, she's not had a chance to do that.
My guess is she would have made it earlier than I hear.
I talked to her before the meeting.
Okay. All right, on, we didn't vote yet. On October 6th table till the next meeting, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious. On October 20th.
Mayor, any question about that? If I don't move to table, but I do find that I was correct on a correction, what would be the process to have that corrected? Because I remember once it took me nine months to correct some minutes from a Plan Commission meeting.
Let's just take them.
No, I'm going to move to approve. I was hoping you would have an answer.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious. Item E, Agreement of Timothy Solomon to the Command Development Authority.
Who to prove?
All those in favor? I'll throw a roll call, please.
Alderman Nelson.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Hanneman.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
No.
Mayor.
Aye.
DeAndrea.
Aye.
Most curious, five ayes, one no, no asset, no extensions. About item G1, reconsideration action for the October 20th common council meeting, resolution denied conditions and restrictions for special use, Mr. City Attorney.
Subject matter of reconsideration is addressed on the common council action sheet, including a citation of the municipal code stating in part that it shall be an order for any member who voted in the affirmative on any question which was adopted, or for any member who voted in the negative when the number of affirmative votes was insufficient for adoption, to move a reconsideration of such vote at the same or next succeeding regular meeting of the council. From a process standpoint, that's why the subject matter is on this agenda and is a relative standard practice for local governments to allow for reconsideration at the next meeting. Also, I cited Robert's Rules of Order with regard to the second being of a motion to reconsider may be made by any member of the common council, regardless of how the member voted on the motion to be reconsidered. So the motion stays in effect until it's reconsidered, and the first step in the process is whether or not there is a motion to reconsider the action taken on October 20th. And the final action was to deny the proposed resolution granting the special use with conditions thereon, and for the council to deliberate, and if there is such a motion, and if it passes, then the common council deliberates and discusses where the council might decide to go after the deliberation and discussion. And when it's open, it's subject to a proposed amendment. In the council action sheet, there's a proportion, proposal for a motion to substitute a motion. In lieu of that, procedurally, the common council can also, if there is a motion and a second, move to put the subject matter of deliberation consideration further over to a further in-the-future meeting, et cetera, et cetera.
So the net is, Mr. City Attorney, a motion gets made as per the council action sheet. If the motion is successful, the net of that motion is that the action of October 20th in denial is nullified, but the motion is... The vote is, that's what I was trying to get to. The vote is nullified, but the motion stands.
The motion is still, is pending now.
Correct. That's what I'm saying.
For further deliberation, action, amendments, et cetera.
Okay.
I agree with the reason.
Why do you?
There's a motion on the floor, there's a second. All the women have?
Point of order.
The motion takes precedence.
Point of order.
The motion takes precedence.
City Attorney, the point of order which takes precedence, please.
What's the point of order?
The point of order was I would, I had my hand up to be recognized, and has called the mayor when the alderperson jumped in to make a motion. And I was clearly trying to be recognized and ignored. And verbally, it's on the microphone. I turned my microphone on even to speak.
Motion to reconsider is permitted even without order, per Robert's. So I do not find any issue of any substance on that concern.
Okay, I still have a question.
That's fine. So there is a motion. Is there a second?
I'll take it.
It's been seconded by Alderman, Alderman Wilhelm, and then Alderman Nelson. I get my call.
I guess, I've been coming to council meetings for 20 years. I've seen reconsiderations. It's the first time I've ever seen one presented this way, so this was quite unusual. I'm sure all the points were thought out on this. When it was written, it led everyone to believe it wasn't going to be reconsidered, it was going to be a closed session discussion. So to me, the agenda feels a little misleading to the public. I think everybody can read into there that it says the wording about closed session here. So I kind of find it interesting. But I do have the question, if the council, four members originally, had an opinion one way, and two members with the mayor have an opinion another way, what is the legal mayor had an opinion another way, what is the legal representation for the city attorney? If there should be a legal issue or somebody takes it to court? For the city attorney, who do you represent? The four people that voted one way or the two people or the mayor?
The common council.
But if the common council is divided, then how do you represent?
Process would be the question. They don't represent common council members individually as to policymaking positions or the common council as to recommending policymaking decisions. So the only question that would arise would be a process question. And it is what it is, whether it's one, five, two, four.
Well, my reason for saying that is because I saw kind of what happened on the copart and it was sort of like handing the other side the information. And I spent a lot of time in meetings, oh, we're going to try to figure, and I felt like you just took all the things we said and handed over to them to go up against us. I don't want to see that happen to the people here. I think that if there were, if there's a split decision, the representation should reflect that as well. So I'm just throwing that out there. So.
I have a question.
Mr. Dean.
What do you mean by that? Do you mean things that the city attorney said on the record in trying to advise the common council as to points that should be taken in the adoption process or decision-making process? If the city attorney didn't do that, then the argument would be the city attorney's not advising the common council as a client.
I wasn't referring exactly to the city attorney. I'll just leave it at that and I don't know which one you're talking to regarding the copart or the other one, but I have.
The common council.
We can have a conversation after on this. I don't want to get into it here, but I just, I think the citizens kind of feel like there's a little bit of a split and they need to know where the loyalty is for them and that's what I'm asking.
Alderman Nelson.
Well, let it go on. I have a question. Don't question any. So I guess I just would like to know, when I saw this come on Friday and read it and would like just a simple answer, who wanted this to come back? Who requested this for reconsideration?
Alderman Hammond.
It was I, Alderman Nelson.
Thank you.
If people listened carefully to my remarks at the council meeting on October 20th, I think it was very clear I was leaning towards approval of this project. Throughout the meeting, additional questions were raised with respect to unified development ordinance. Additionally, in the late hours, there were theatrics from many sides meant to confuse and intimidate. I believe outright falsehoods were being thrown around with amendments to motions that few people could follow. Rumors and accusations became the center of discussion rather than the facts of the situation. To have made a final decision in the midst of the bedlam was unfair to everyone involved. It was not our shining moment. At some points in this process, our system failed us. And at other points, we failed to honor our system. But that's a discussion for another day. In the time since that meeting on October 20th, I have heard from countless fourth district residential and business constituents, all with the message that we got it wrong. Believe me, I was taken to the woodshed. I believed the failed motion to table the business at hand and allow the applicant additional time to address the questions and come back at a time when cooler heads could prevail was wrong. The impact, economic impact analysis that I presented on October 20th still stands and I stand on that and it has since been underscored and expanded upon by the proceedings of the city's finance committee on October 27th. Also, since that time, I've taken time to personally meet with the applicant to satisfy or relieve resolve the questions that I had particularly regarding noise of the ventilation fans and we can discuss that possibly later in the evening. So Strauss has been operating in my neighborhood for the past 50 years without complaints or any measurable negative impacts. I believe there's nothing illegal nor immoral about their operations. In fact, speaking as someone who grew up on a farm, I find there's great dignity in supplying food for a growing population. I am well convinced of the ability of this company to continue to grow their business in Franklin without any perceptible negative impact to our community, hence my motion to reconsider. Now, having said that, I also want to be very, very clear that I was not pressured by anyone up here to make the motion for reconciliation. I was pressured, however, by other members sitting up here to come up with creative ways to sideline this again. So I'll leave it at that.
The motion on the floor to reconsider. Again, the action to reconsider merely negates the vote, does not take the motion to deny off the table. Mr. Dean.
Alderman DeAndrea.
Wait a minute. Let me do this. What color are you going to put the motion? Yeah. What color are you going to put? Did you say something, please? And Alderman, hold push your button, please.
I have a question. Question for the city attorney regarding abstentions. Will you please let the council know what constitutes a quorum or not quorum regarding abstention?
Well, quorum of, quorum of the council is, quorum of the council, what do you mean by abstention?
Yes.
Well, I heard of, I heard of former Alderman mentioned something earlier. And over the last number of years, legal opinion, Wisconsin League of, League of Wisconsin municipalities, the opinion used to be back close around the 90s, present and voting with regard to votes and that changed over time. And with regard to a league frequently asked question which contains part of the opinion, the question is how many votes are required to approve a proposed action of a governmental body? The general rule is that where the law relating to a particular subject does not specify the vote required to do a particular act, a majority is sufficient and a majority is sufficient with regard to reconsideration. This rule does not necessarily mean that a majority of the body must vote to pass the measure and it cites State Exrel verdict v. Tyrell, a 1914 Wisconsin, U.S. Supreme Court, Wisconsin Supreme Court case where the law does not specify that a majority of the members of the body must vote. A vote by a majority of the quorum is sufficient. And I actually cited that particular opinion back at a special common council meeting on March 26, 2015 where three council members abstained, but the vote of three to zero to three amounted to an approval vote under that opinion.
And what's the three yeses, two nos and one abstention? Is that a pass or not? Three yeses, one abstention and two nos? It's not a majority of the council.
You said two, 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 right? Two abstentions.
Three yes, two no, one abstention.
That's a majority of the quorum.
The question is, is it pass or not?
Yes.
Takes two abstentions?
Two abstentions means that four are voting, so it's majority of the four.
So I guess it's in the mayor's hands.
And the municipal code was also amended through the years, section 19-7D, and that was done with the consultation from the general council. In part, it states when a board member abstains upon any matter, such abstention shall not diminish the number required to take action when the requirement, where the requirement is for the concurrence of a majority or other specified proportion of all the members of the common council. That means all members alive then, or means a two-thirds, four or a three-quarters supermajority vote. However, where the voting requirement is for the concurrence of a specified proportion of the council or other phrase indicating its membership at the time action is taken, the required number shall be reduced by such abstention in all cases.
That's clear as mine.
League council, that's why I received the second opinion because that was from the abstention being treated as neither affirmative or a negative vote, so.
I don't feel like I got the best legal advice on the answers to my question.
Well, it's correct.
It's correct, but it's not clear. That's the problem.
You gave me the numbers and I answered on the numbers.
Everything I said, it passes regardless. So if it's three, it's three passing.
So.
Three nos or three, three yeses, three abstentions. What's that?
Majority of those voted.
So it's still pass?
Yes.
Yep. So, good. I just wanted to make sure the audience understands.
Well, the ethical thing is to represent your constituents in vote.
Um, Mayor.
So would the common council, please, push your microphone button so we can hear it, please? You have the exception thing on, and you might.
I would like to comment to the ethical statement, please.
Of course.
It could be that the alderman felt as if there was way too much information that came in that is not part of the public record, including emails that were 10 pages long that I haven't had a chance to read and the letter from the Indian Community Schools attorneys, which the lady right up there, but she didn't read the whole thing, which was sitting here when I got here. So ethically, I wouldn't say an abstention would be based on ethics. I would be based on not enough time or the public getting the same information. Thank you.
Absolutely correct. I 100% agree with you. And please, everyone note that I absolutely 100% agree with Alderman Wilhelm. But that's why you take the denial and vote to remove it and then take further action so that you can review those documents. Mr. Dean. Please call him. The motion, yes. The motion to reconsider action taken on October 20th, 2020, to deny a resolution imposing conditions and restrictions for the approval of special use for meat product processing facility use upon a property located at the southwest corner of the intersection of West Lewis Road and the new Monarch Drive, lot 83 Orion Meadows subdivision, Strauss Brands LLC applicant and the nonapproval thereof.
Here's the motion by Alderman Hanneman and a second by Alderman DeAndrea. DeAndrea.
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor.
No.
Wilhelm.
No.
Hanneman.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Nelson.
No.
Wisconsin Act 67, limited circumstances under which the cities can deny special use of permits. That law passed in 2017 with both our legislators. It happened to be Tim Skoronsky.
It's discussion of the poll.
It's a poll.
I understand. Jesse Rodriguez, Chuck Witczkarsz and Dave Craig. Strauss provided answers to the planning commission, common council, or concerns raised by the common council.
I need to call the question.
Staff and constituent has agreed to the current conditions in the resolution. Staff based on their expertise and training and licensure and reading of the laws has recommended approval. Plan commission's recommended approval. Reasons offered for denial in the motions don't have the required substance to them and put the city in tremendous risk. Mayor votes no for the motion to deny, to deny the special use permit and therefore. So, so the motion to reconsider, the motion, the mayor votes aye. The motion votes, the mayor votes aye. So therefore, the action has been reconsidered. And the motion to deny is on the table. So, in the intervening two weeks, I had conversations with several constituents. One of them continues to have issues, but he discussed at length with me what his issues were. He's a relatively nearby neighbor. And they've been addressed by Strauss in their latest response to us. And they've been addressed by Strauss in their latest response to us. He has an issue with the potential noise coming from the loading docks, and Strauss has agreed to raise the height of the berm and extend it. I agreed to work on that for this constituent. Constituent now continues to not be a friend of mine, but, you know, I made a commitment to him, and Strauss has agreed to that. So that solves the problem for that constituent. Alderman Hanneman, you have an issue that you want me to...
Yes, yes.
Just pull up.
Be there, ma'am.
Hold on. Should be on, you gotta push your button. Do something, sorry. Do something, I'm sorry.
My light is green, but my, that light is not on. There we are. The primary issue that stuck out in my mind with regards to the UDO meeting on October 20th had to do with the ventilation plants that they would use to run the air cleaning system to reduce the odors. Because the ordinance says that in an M1 district, the decibels must be at or below 65 at the property line. And so I wanted to review that system and make sure that they would be in compliance with that and understand a little bit more about how and when those fans would be used. The applicant does guarantee, and they will add mitigation measures in terms of some chimneys and baffling that will make sure that sounds are not heard past the boundary line or they're at, with intolerance of what are UDO states. So that was really what stood out to me on October 20th. So we talked for a good hour about that in and of itself, and I am well satisfied. Thank you.
I had missed what you said, your negotiation was with them, that you said had a constituent that was considered, was it the berm?
Higher berm and an extended berm.
So you negotiated a higher berm. Alderman Hanneman negotiated a sound, and these were both outside of the council chambers with all the council. All right, so good. All right.
There are my constituents.
And that's the way this works.
And so I didn't know, I didn't know we had the ability to go outside and negotiate with them, so I would have liked to negotiate the hours of operations, and I still would like to, these were the backup conditions that I had at the last meeting that I'd never got through because Alderman DeAndrea jumped to make the motion. I would like to put a couple other conditions in if we're going to move towards an approval on this for the hours of operation. I would also like to carry over the language from their current special use, that they're held to about water consumption, and that language is in their current special use, so if they're okay with it now, they shouldn't have too much of a time with that. I asked for a limit on headcount. They didn't seem to be agreeable to that, but I would think at some point the city might want to consider. I mean, do you want this to be the largest slaughterhouse in the U.S.? Or do you want to consider some type of headcount limitation? As far as the road to the development, from Chickory down, it's 100% Strauss's road. With the berm buffer that was built on the side, I don't see why the taxpayers should have to pay to plow, maintain, salt, pay our DPW staff for that private road. I mean, even says in here that that road was built for them. So I'd like consideration that from Chickory down, that the maintenance is their obligation to save the taxpayers some money. I'd also like to consideration about independent inspections, such as that we have for the landfill and the quarry where we have independent monitoring done for odors and such that could We still haven't had the, what the Indian Community Schools said was a traffic study. I'd like to make a contingent on a traffic study.
There is one.
There is a traffic study? And included all of those other trucks as well?
Mm-hmm.
Let's see. So I guess you can pick off that one. I didn't, it didn't seem to be a full traffic study from what I'm used to traffic studies. That's why I questioned that one. There was a property guarantee that the residents wanted. I was hoping we could get some type, the lease management had some type of property guarantee, because I remember Donald Adams had his property on market after so long, they had to buy that. And the quarry also had a property guarantee, so we could probably come up with some language with that. And I think that is most of the conditions that would make this a little more palatable that we sell our residents. Is there any consideration for those?
I'll yield, so, ready? I'll just, from my list, which was full page long, I boil it down to odor, traffic, noise, pollution, property value. Of those, the only issue that frankly is, in my view, and in the view of the professionals that I've talked to, including the professionals I've talked to, the only one that's not been addressed and is nearly impossible to address is property values. Because of the number of variables involved, how do you know what's affecting the property value at any given time? And where do you stop? Where do you start? Where do you stop? Other than that, Strauss has dealt with, addressed. So there's conversation in the letter that you've received from Strauss relative to some of the things that you've asked for already regarding some of those issues. I remind you all that there's four USDA inspectors on site throughout their business day, keeping track of odor and the health aspects inside that building. And they're as independent as you get. So for us to send somebody back in, I'm not going to waste time. Relative to odor complaints, I have a commitment from Mr. Bussin to work with the health department, and that's in the document, isn't it? Work with the di, with the health department to come up with a odor complaint system, and... What? I'm teasing, I'm teasing. And I think with Alderman of the district, I think that can be worked out very nicely. Mr. Alderman.
Could you give me the green light?
I will be that.
Okay, Mr. Bussin, I know we had a couple of town halls and such. I know one of the big sticking points was that delivery time, and it was a 1:00 a.m. delivery time. And is there any way that that can be addressed? Because that was a big, I mean, I've got a few things here, and I know I'm not, these are things that we, that were discussed in the past, and looking at some ways to be reasonable with if this is to go through, which I've got time for. What are your thoughts, sir?
So the reason for the 1:00 a.m. delivery time is more related to inclement weather. So typically, our delivery is going to be 4:00 a.m., so if it wasn't 4:00 a.m., and if all things work out well, they're going to be finished before a new hour. So what we really utilize that 1:00 a.m., the 4:00 a.m. slot is if there's weather coming into the areas that we're bringing our cattle in from, what we need is schedule early delivery, delivery time for the safety of the cattle, and then still get those animals to our facility. So it's very, it's going to be very rare to have a 1:00 a.m., a 4:00 a.m. delivery time.
Second point, second point is the smell issue. Many residents in the district feel that we're getting ignored by the current landfill, floral fields, when we have issues, when we have concerns. They get filed away, and we never hear anything, we never have resolution. It's the reoccurring themes like Rob Long Day, the movie, or the movie, but that's what I'm referring to, where it's the same thing. Same problem, no resolution. And that is, that's a big deal. And a lot of the, especially in the last, well, since Friday again, when this was being brought up on the, on the agenda, it is, that's pretty much like the number one, my second one, it's a whole second, but number one is the smell. So we have to have something in place, have to. And I don't know what the plan's going to be, but it's got to have something with teeth, it's got to have something that's got, you know, it can't just be, okay, thank you for your time, and then shuffle us away, because we're there. I mean, we have, we're the neighbors, we're the residents, we're, we're it. And I just hope that something, that's a well-thought-out plan, a well-thought-out procedure can be brought up. I'm not going to ask you what it is, because I'm sure it's, you know, this is a whole different type of plan, it's a whole different type of animal, and I'm going apples-to-apples with on 60th Street, so, okay? And as far as the property values, I understand there's a lot of moving parts, there's a lot of things that you solely can't be responsible for with property values, as there's also another project that is self-y, which I think would have more of a negative impact. However, looking at that, perhaps maybe there's something that can be brought up where at least the values can't decrease from where they are today, and so I'm not progressing this to you, this is just a matter of discussion that maybe we've got to think about, that something can be brought up, that we aren't screwing our taxpayers that own these properties, and we're actually, their own communities got their back on something to say that you're not going to lose. And again, this isn't to you, this is the group up here to think about that, and think yours about it. And I guess one of the last points is to work on, the residential pieces are what's really concerns me. Because when we were told that it was going to be the residential builds are going to be digging basements in July, I kept hearing that term, that's like the cool guy term if you're a developer, that they were going to be digging basements in July, digging basements in July. And as of Sunday, as of Sunday before the Lurk Pecker game, I did my little ride around and saw that, again, this is, there's no signs of, there's nothing going on, and that's one of my biggest concerns, and that should be a concern of everybody on this board, that there is nothing going on there. If I wanted to buy a lot, there's nothing I can buy a lot, because there's nothing there, so I'm just very concerned that some of these high-end single-family developments are going to be either stymied or delayed greatly. And again, this isn't directed towards you, this is directed towards the rest of the board here. But it is just a concern I wanted to report. Push the button. Button is your friend.
I just can't tell who is pointing it. So as far as the hours of operation, and you're saying it would be a rare delivery, what, what kind of language can you suggest of that? Because really, if you, if you decide to continue on 1:00 in the morning, and you just say, well, it's a rare delivery, that we have no teeth in that. So I'm not sure if that addresses...
Well, we could, we could put inclement weather, you know, only use this delivery window during inclement weather, which you would still have to prove out, but I think we could prove that we brought livestock in certain hours based on weather patterns.
Would there be a definition of what inclement weather could mean?
Weather that causes hazardous road conditions. If it's weather that you want to drive in, that's unsafe for, for animals or humans.
Hazardous road conditions might be a little bit, I think the definition should probably be more defined. How do you feel about the water consumption language, that's in the current special use, and having some kind of water consumption?
So I've not read that language, so I can't agree to something I haven't read, because the special use is, is fairly old, and I have no idea what it states.
Well, I think that would be sort of important, because you are like our highest water user.
So what, can you read what the language states?
I'm not sure. If I can pull it up right now. I don't even know what I brought with me, because...
Alderman, and I'm going to get crucified on the internet, but remember that the water utility and the utility of ours is running.
I understand that. So there's language in there that if it's like over a certain gallon, that they have to do, I just thought it was pretty good language to include. And then the limit on headcount, is there any size limit on headcount that you would even consider? Can you toss a number up for the residents that you would even consider ever getting
720.
Yeah. You want to be okay with that for phase one and two, or just phase one?
I'd be okay with that, phase one and two, yes.
720.
What about 500? 500.
Please.
Per day.
Is that five days a week, look at, because? Oh, then do it, let's know that.
Potentially six. Up to six, yes.
Yes.
And then the last point I feel is pretty important, and that is, since the road from Chickory down is 100% your own, but the residents, no one needs that road, it was built specifically for this parcel. I really don't feel that the residents, who paid to build it, that forever we're going to have to pay to maintain it, which includes plowing, salting, and reconstruction. So by the time the tids pay off, the citizens of Franklin will be redoing that road, which your trucks will be on. I think that it would be a really great thing for you to offer to take that road. My condo association takes care of our entire road going into our condo, and we're a lot smaller income than Strauss could even think of all of being. And think we have all the paving, all the snow flowing, all the salting of our own road. I'm just thinking about the taxpayers of Franklin, it's not, it's not their road.
Give me a second, I see a different color, please.
Perhaps the question is for, for the city engineer, that's a public role, and in the future, the plan is that it continues to serve as access for the balance of the properties that lead to the south, and he's nodding his head yes.
We were told the pants that that road wouldn't ever go through, and that it was just the cul-de-sac is already there to the end, so.
Yeah, I don't believe I've ever made that statement. So if you recall, there's a temporary cul-de-sac that was designed, and it was meant to be temporary. It was also intended to be, if you will, a secondary entrance from the copark, but the copark didn't come out that far, but that is still designed to...
But that is still designed to go further south and connect to future properties in the south is the idea.
Well, the kind of goal is so far south because there's pretty massive wetland going beyond the edge of that property. I don't see that getting permanent for a reason.
There are difficult issues to deal with, I won't deny that.
Particularly in the lives and the good sharing with the way a road is remained beginning.
Well, maybe when another user comes on and they can add them on, like associations have to do when you add on another development to theirs. A perfect example is the situation in the condo association I live where they gave the road to the association. And at the end of the road, at the end of the cul-de-sac, the city decided to add on more buildings. Actually, you know, just as many residents at the end of the cul-de-sac. And then the original subdivision ends up paying for all the people going across the road. You know, it's like, okay, so everybody benefits from the road, and everyone pays for it. I mean, it's not really any different than that kind of situation where you give the road to someone and then it's up to them to the demo shoot to make the people at the end of it pay for it. And you do that with private.
Chicory Street goes all the way up to.
I'm talking about.
To Ryan Road.
I'm talking about Chicory South. From Chicory South, it's 100% will be serving Strauss until an unknown period of time.
You're talking Monarch Drive?
Monarch Drive, no, from Chicory South.
No, when I get, no, because you are aware that there's discussions about more, more, more buildings on that, on the other side of the street.
The berm on that side of the street on one side.
Just to be transparent, there's discussions about more buildings on the other side of the street, it's an industrial park.
There's a developed lot.
I believe there is a planned lot opposite side of the street.
That's it.
Hold on, let me, then, or push your button.
Well, I do hear where the older woman is asking a lot of questions of the, of the company. I don't want to put a water limit on their usage because water is extremely important for their processing. And they, they're already investing millions of dollars into a water reclamation system to cleanse the water that's being used before it goes to MMSD. Now, how many companies do we work with that actually are going to have their own water cleansing system inside, within their own company? They're aware of the usage that they need, but I don't want to limit the quantity of water up. So then if they reach their limit for a given day, they got to stop, stop manufacturing or processing? That's, my God, we're, we're controlling this business from the bench. It's not the intent, but that's what happens. And I'm not going to control a company from the bench. In regards to the road, yes, there's going to be other development. You know, I made that motion to table, and no one wanted to go ahead with tabling, so we could have ironed out these very issues. Everyone was more adamant of killing the deal. I am, the older woman Hatman has put herself out to put this up for consideration. And I have supported this deal, I sit on plan, I've gone through the paperwork on this for hours and hours and hours. Everybody has their one issue that they don't like about this deal. But it's not enough to, to deny a company that has been actually a very good corporate citizen of City of Franklin. I am not going to make the motion because I believe Ms. Hatman should be making the motion in the direction that she is comfortable in going. And I will support the direction that you'd like us to go. I'll yield to Ms. Hatman.
So that would be a motion to substitute a motion to adopt a resolution imposing conditions and restrictions for the approval of a special use for a meat processing facility used upon property located at the southwest corner of the intersection of West Loomis Road and the New Monarch Drive, parents lot 83 of Ryan Meadows subdivision, parents Strauss Brands LLC applicant, parents, as presented to the common council on November 2nd, 2020, in place of a motion to deny a resolution imposing conditions and restrictions for the approval of a special use for a meat processing facility used upon property located at the southwest corner of the intersection of West Loomis Road and the New Monarch Drive, parent lot 83 of Ryan Meadows subdivision, parent, and Strauss Brands LLC applicant, and the non-approval thereof.
I'll second.
Question.
Hold on, Mayor.
I don't think anything has changed from two weeks ago, if the motion, nine, two weeks ago was accurate. I think the points of the UDO are accurate, I won't rehash that. I think Strauss is a good business, I believe they're successful because of their location currently. I think not enough's been done to find a different location, I believe this is a wrong location. It's not about being anti-business or anti-development, it's just the wrong development in the wrong area. I've heard from many, many constituents, the vast majority feel the same way, not against development, just against development in this area. So I believe last, the motion last, two weeks ago was accurate, and I would still support that.
Mr. City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, I believe the city planning manager has some potential proposed conditions to add. This is based upon city planning manager's review of the letter submitted by Strauss this morning from the Strauss president. And his suggestions as to added conditions to the draft resolution in the common council agenda packet to add as a condition number 21, the applicant successors and assigns shall implement sound control devices, including but not limited to additional chimes or baffles to reduce the sound from exhaust and ventilation fans to a maximum of 65 decibels at the property line. Proposed potential additional condition number 22, the applicant successors and assigns shall mitigate truck traffic noise and impact by installing a five-foot-high landscaper on the east side of a livestock loading area to provide additional screening and sound reflection. Proposed additional condition number 23, the applicant successors and assigns shall further mitigate truck traffic noise and impact by increasing the height of the berm along the north property line by an average of two feet over that shown on the existing approved site plan. This berm shall be designed to appear natural. Proposed additional condition number 24, the applicant successors and assigns shall submit a revised landscape plan which shows the approved changes to berms and landscape buffers as provided in conditions number 22 and 23 above. And a proposed potential condition, added condition number 25, the applicant successors and assigns shall establish and maintain a citizen complaint procedure in which concerned residents contact the designated representative of the applicant.
Point of order. Why is the public bringing that stuff to the desert?
Yeah, it's very annoying.
I didn't ask for it, I'll read whatever it says.
No, you're right.
Well, say, I didn't ask for anybody to bring me anything.
Oh, start a condition number 25 again. The applicant successor that assigns shall establish and maintain a citizen complaint procedure in which concerned residents contact the designated representative of the applicant successors or assigns and provide details of any complaints. The applicant successors and assigns shall compile any and all complaints and submit a monthly report of the complaints to the city health department along with any actions taken. This procedure shall be in addition to current coordination with the city health department regarding complaints and coordinating responses thereto.
One change on that. On the first one relative to the stone, that should read, instead of the property line, the, the building, ground of the building nears the fan. Because there's going to be bombs and stuff that get on property windows. So fans right there, you can make the measurement at the ground level, it's easier for you guys, it's more restrictive for us. It's easy for you to measure, it should be.
I would amend my motion to include those conditions.
Hold on, Hatman.
I amend my motion to include those conditions just read by the city attorney.
Hold on, then, then.
Then I'll amend my statement.
Hold on, I will.
Would your amendment to the motion include the limit on the 720? Do you have that to your mind?
No.
So, so far, we haven't addressed the water consumption issue and so it's out, no one up here called with the actual water consumption language, who created special use was, but somehow we're against it anyway, and though we don't have it currently. And then we won't secure a maximum come. And so far, we have sound control, berm for truck noise, added landscaping plan revision. And then this complaint procedure. Why wouldn't we use the current complaint procedure that's already on the C website? Because I can tell you, if someone gets the complaints for the quarry, that procedure goes nowhere. People complain, the current procedure that's in the ordinance requires the complaint to go in, it requires staff to respond, and then it requires follow-up. And if the complaint isn't addressed and there's some legal issues, it can go to court. But the quarry procedure complaint, it's pretty much, you complain to them, they tell you you don't have an issue, and then that's it, it's satisfied. I'm not sure I'm really happy, we have a complaint procedure in place already, I'm not sure we need a special one that will get the attention like we have now. Anybody who's involved in the quarry complaint procedure, would understand how well that is handled.
Hold on, Nelson, then I'll work on that one.
I'll yield, Ron.
So if you notice an odor, now let's say if someone outside the building notices an odor, will USDA gets involved?
So it took away now for out, an outer outdoor area, the USDA would not get involved. So the odor system is going to have to be on us, so the regulation is really with monitoring livestock incoming, and then the four walls of the building. But then we have two tech yachts that I think that would be noted. So really, it's just going to be on us, and then the USDA is under control.
Hold on, Nelson, then hold on.
Just for a point of clarification, as we discussed moving up to today, you know, and I, you know, agree with not managing from the bench, but just point of clarification, how did it go from a max of 500 head a day over six days to now up to 720? If that could just be clarified, because I thought the entire time this whole discussion was going on, it was at peak 500, at peak 500, I kept hearing that from you and other members, it was at peak 500, just please clarify that.
So in the foreseeable future, those numbers are true. If I'm asked to put a number that's very specific on the, on the, if we're to limit the building, I'm going to take the number that is the maximum capacity that we can fully do. And, and our forecast that's put together, we don't show that, you know, in the next seven years, we even approach a 500 head number per day. But 15 years from now, you know, maybe we get to a point where we actually utilize the space completely, and we get to 720. I find that unlikely to happen, if we had to have the number on it, the maximum number that the cars want to get to. I was saying, thank you.
Mr. Attorney.
What about adding the inclement weather condition, I mean, 1:00 a.m. to 4:00 a.m. truck traffic?
Well, frankly, I was working on that, but I haven't got my head around it.
Well, could be, to add 1:00 a.m. to 4:00 a.m. truck traffic use is only allowed during terms of inclement weather, exact terms of that can be subject to approval by engineering and planning, the city engineer and the city planning manager.
Only issue on that is, it's got to be a post, not free.
Yeah, and all the way to make the decision, so we can go through the process, like we have that big of a post review, I agree.
You've called in.
Hold on.
Still think the headcount is pretty important, if they're willing to do it, I don't know why we wouldn't do that. Otherwise, you know, we could end up with one of the largest slatter losses in the USA. And as far as the, the current complaint process, I sure wish I would have remembered to bring their old special use because it talks in there that if they have a complaint, they have to remedy within six hours or the health department shuts them down. So there's really good language in that 1971 special use that governs us right now. I wish, you know, we would have been given that, I wish the plan commission would have been given that when it, before, when the public hearing was going on, because. hearing was going on, because, um, we might have had some of those conditions in there Without a little bit more of the conditions, I'm really not feeling real comfortable about protections from our community. And I guess I have to agree with Alderman Mayor, this isn't about not liking Strauss, isn't about vegan food. I, I grew up on a farm, we actually did raise cows that went out for, uh, to be raised for this issue. So, um, I was involved in the meat bag growing up, so I know it's like, um, but this is to me not the right location. And one of the special use conditions was to look for an alternate location. I think that would be more over by Twenty-Seventh Street on, by, on the border over there. I think it'd be a perfect fit, you'd have a bus line, it'd be much more fitting than this area.
Are we clear?
So we're clear, no seven hundred, no water, you see, you have no complaint process that they can shut down if they don't fix it in some hours. So we're not including any of that.
Okay, Ms. Eno, you have a motion on, uh, do you have a motion to amend?
Motion to amend.
We have a motion to amend. All those in favor, motion to amend. Seeing everybody saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
No. All right, Ms. Eno.
Alderman Nelson?
No.
Barber?
Aye.
Hammond?
Aye.
Wilhel.
I just want to make it clear, I'm voting, voting on the motion to amend the conditions to which will have some conditions to help the cause, I vote aye.
Mayor?
No.
Andrew?
Aye.
Four ayes, two noes. No exit, no extension, the motion carries, as you know. Okay, so the motion has been amended to include those conditions. Okay, on the main motion, might as well just go ahead and figure it out. So now we need a motion.
No, wait, let's see, there was a motion to substitute.
To substitute, yes.
And that's the main motion, right? With the conditions added. Just to clarify.
We're, we're voting on the main motion to approve right now.
But there's a motion to substitute.
I think we've got a really big...
The motion to substitute is akin to a motion to amend. It's not ultimately adopting, as it says on the action sheet, if the motion to substitute passes, the next step in terms of if it gets adopted would be the vote on the motion as substituted. So it would be, uh, the motion would then be a motion to adopt the resol, adopt the resolution of imposing conditions and ultimately approving the special use, um, as presented to the common council on November two, twenty.
Clarification.
Hold on.
I'm not clear on the middle motion. Just in the conditions, I'm clearing the end one, the middle motion is substituting the current, what, what is it substituting?
It's substituting a motion to approve in place of the motion to deny.
Okay, on the motion to substitute, the motion to approve for the motion as amended.
Alderman, Adrian.
Aye.
Mayor?
No.
Wilhel?
No.
Hammond?
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
Nelson?
No.
Mayor votes to affect the outcome, they're both aye, motion carries. So then we need a motion to...
No. Motion to substitute passed.
The motion passed, amended. So now, we need a motion to adopt the resolution imposing conditions and restrictions.
Not, not a motion, a vote upon the motion to...
Nope, sorry. If I could learn how to read that, I'd be surprised. No, we need, we need, uh, we need a motion.
The motion is before the common council. The next step would be a vote upon the motion to adopt the resolution imposing conditions and restrictions for the approval of a special use for a meat processing facility used by property located at the southwest corner of the intersection of West Davis Road and the New Monarch Drive, plot eighty-three of Ryan Meadows subdivision, Strauss Brands LLC applicant, as presented to the common council on November two, twenty.
Ms. Eno.
Alderman Nelson?
No.
Barber?
Aye.
Hammond?
Aye.
Wilhel?
No.
Mayor?
No.
Andrew?
Aye.
Mayor votes to affect the outcome, they're both aye. Motion carries, vote is four ayes, three noes, no exit, no extensions, motion carries. Good. With that, move on on the agenda.
Um, on, uh, a couple of these items, the applicant's one, the people of Calhoun, but no one left on there. Would it, the next, um... James, would you let that person in? I have...
Oh, just click in then.
Other ones for, um, whatever one was for, uh...
Three, four.
Might, might take them out.
I'm a poll here.
Your poll is here?
All right. Try, try to see.
Didn't, you know, it's, it was here.
There does, there does a computer appear?
Uh, here I go.
All right, well, we need to review TID six financing plan with the pending three million dollar debt offering. The action we just took kind of changed this whole conversation. Mr. Attorney.
So, Mr. Mayor, the, uh... The Finance Committee reviewed the TID six financing plan approved by the common council on October sixth, but considering the action which the common council just took in its previous action, this item becomes moot.
Any other questions?
That's a little work off the answer.
Why can't we just leave it on? At least do that all the time.
Because the cameras are controlled by this and...
Well, that's a good answer, at least I know that. Um, so do you know if the feasibility study on the pre-sale, um, for the models included the potential negative externalities? Because, do you know if it contained that at all?
I didn't hear what you were asking it contained.
Um, the externalities of the, um, effects that could happen?
Externalities?
Yes, they're defined as the costs incurred by, um, the third party do not choose and accruals costs. As, so basically there are issues that can affect the property values, because we have a, you know, three point, or thirty-three point five million of real estate values at stake. And when this originally came and was going off a bit, I don't know, I wish that they were here to ask if always knew what the project was and if it was going to be a slaughterhouse at that time, because all of those things should have been taken into consideration on what could happen to the real estate values. Those are the things that could bring that down.
On page one twenty-eight of your packet is the development assumptions should the Strauss property not to be constructed. In the pre-sale report, while the development assumption page was not included, because it was primarily focused on the repayment of the debt, the development assumptions for the Strauss property had that valued at thirty-three million dollars as opposed to this ultimate plan at only ten million dollars, which was the minimum assessed guarantee. So the assessment values for the Strauss property in the pre-sale report was a little over thirty-three million dollars as opposed to the ten million on page one twenty-eight.
Well, it sounds like when we did the pre-sale, we didn't include that, um, the whole Strauss issue, but now we're looking at what we have and what Strauss didn't have. So...
Both analysis included assumptions about development.
About development, but I meant about Strauss in particular and the fact it's a slaughterhouse.
Both analysis included assumptions of evaluation for the, all the property. I understand the elements question be concerned about the Strauss property in both analysis. We are reflecting on page one twenty-eight, though a more pessimistic view that the Strauss property was to be valued at the minimum assessed guarantee. In the pre-sale report, while the assessed values were not displayed, I did ask LRS to provide that to me, and the Strauss property was valued at thirty-three million dollars, which is approximately sixty-one percent of the construction cost.
So they knew it was a slaughterhouse?
Yes.
And those, which we, I'm calling the externalities, which can affect it. Were no one at that time in the pre-sale and all of that quickly?
I'm, I'm familiar with the term externalities, but the value of the Strauss property was included as a slaughterhouse at thirty-three million dollars, and there has been no change in the assessed, assumed assessments for the residential property in either, they were the same in both cases.
Slaughterhouse, not meat processing, whole slaughterhouse.
Correct.
That's hopeful. But at the moment, we have a sale document, it's going to win a paper, and I know that it's a public document, and there's people, the opportunity to make comments, and we have been in there, and I wonder, I would have requested that. So at this point, we don't need to worry about, um, giving ourselves time, or we still could reconsider some of these options. I mean, one buys time to find another ten number two, but we really all need to find another ten. Um, one buys time for anticipation, though, but the other one, you know, there's different options here. We don't have to do this right now, we could do it. Is there any advantage to doing that at all?
As reported to the Finance Committee, the city has an obligation to pay draws on infrastructure construction by the developer. That's in the developer's agreement. We sold six million dollars plus, including some capitalized interest, to fund the first six million and the nine million. That money will be drawn, and there will be no additional money on the city's hands. The developers indicated that their construction continues and that they will make a draw against that additional three million dollars sometime in the next sixty days.
Okay, I didn't realize it was going to be that quickly. Because I thought if we had time or if there, you know, it could be a different rate or something, that we might want to consider putting it out, but if it's going to be sixty days, obviously that would be...
That's what they've told us, is that within sixty days they'll be making further draw requests.
Okay, with that, I'm going to go make a phone call. Alderman, Andrew is going to take the mic, phone perhaps, come on.
Okay. Um, you don't have to do more than that?
We, we do not have to vote on that.
Well, I'd like to table G three and we need to take to item five, because there's no sense in doing, um, all right, just, let's follow again, uh, vote item one.
Hold on, I'm not following you.
The agreement for Creative Homes Inc. and Franklin, uh, Forty-Ninth Street LLC could strike West...
Yeah, that's item three, we don't need to do an agreement, we don't have funded project yet, so there's no sense in working on an agreement and sort of you fund a project. There's no sense in awarding a bid and sort of fund the project.
Do you know how this got on the agenda?
Well, G five is the funding.
How did three get on the agenda?
How did three get on the agenda? Who asked for three to get up?
Go ahead and do it on the agenda. He mistake in the, the word says Alderman Wilson requested the agreement brought to the common council when the bids were received, was, I asked him to remove that from it because that's not correct. But I, it's public document now, but that's not what I said. I said, don't bring it forward until you actually have the funding. But he didn't remove that. Also, if you look at the back row on G three, it says on August fourth, well, that first motion of all the bid was way back in March, and this is not reflect. So I put that on the record, there was a previous motion...
From March.
In March, people have a bid on that, that should have been on this action sheet for tracking for public records. Because it looks to the public that this all just took place on August fourth, this is not the case.
Okay, um, there may be some reasons why it did not go up in March because of a bad, uh, economic environment.
No, no, he said he didn't understand the action.
Okay.
But I, I'm just asking you to go to five.
But, the city council, is there any problem with us, what should we do with G three? Just...
I think she wants to come back.
You want to come back to it?
Exactly.
Okay, okay, who, should, the other woman would like to go to G five. G five is on page one forty.
I would probably, we'll need the finance officer for this, because it's been, I really don't want to make more motions. I just, I was really, I just want to tell everyone, I was really hoping to get this project done and funded for Mr. Rich Chamberlain before he passed away, he has passed away. He was the guy who's been harassing about his tree line for years, and he had really hoped for a resolution on it, but just wanted to say, I think he was really super gentleman. So, there's additional conversations going on.
But, okay, Alderman. Okay, Alderman, you want to move forward with G five?
Yes. So, Gwen, if we award the bid this year, and Paul, please, Paul vote here, we award this... We award this bid this year, the funds are going to come from this year's budget, or will it have to be rolled over and a new project being entered next year's budget? Or what?
So, item G5, which I believe is the topic that the Chair has said we're talking about, funds a big project for Marquette Avenue's construction in the 2021 budget. Item G4, which is not currently on the table, would have awarded the bid, the low bid, which is funded in the 2020 budget, but the project cost in total is greater than the amount of funding in the current year budget. So you could award construction, but there would be insufficient funding for inspection and any contingencies. Again, should the table decide to take up item four, there was a proposed budget amendment to get direction on that would have provided the additional funding. But you're currently talking about G5, which will provide appropriation in the 2021 budget for the Marquette Avenue construction.
I don't think we really need to overcomplicate this. There was money in the budget for this year. The fact that two liars got messed and $150,000 got lost should not be the fact that it should affect this budget by a clerical error. So, that's disappointing to me, but.
The older woman, we've got it. I mean, that's the appropriation. I hear where the finance director is saying, but you've got the bids on G4. Don't you want to move forward with accepting the bid to then put the appropriations together on G5 to let?
Mr. Chair, you don't, the appropriations are in place on G4. You could award the contract.
Okay.
And the appropriations are currently in place with the funding.
But then it would have to be carried over in the 2021, and it's not going to be cool.
That's, that is an automatic item, because the common council will have awarded a contract committing, a contractual commitment on a part of the city, and so the funding will automatically move forward to 2021, if not completed in 2020.
And what would be the purpose of G5 if G4 does everything we need to do?
The purpose of G5 is to bring forward an item which the finance committee made a recommendation of the common council. It becomes moot if the common council adopts G4.
That's good clarification. And there's not going to be another snap move that's going to come up, where funds won't get carried over, or, oh, we don't have this, or, oh, we couldn't do that, because this has been going on for years. I just, can we just make sure that we're all going to fund this project? And could you speak out loud instead of talking to each other?
Look, she's just telling what she has to do.
So G4 awards the construction contract by use of the Marquette Avenue from 49th to 51st Street and the Marquette Avenue from Pleasant View School to 49th Street. That was a $750,000 appropriation. The construction contract is for $737,000, so there are sufficient appropriations to do the construction.
But we still have to amend the budget. So I want, just give me a motion that does the whole thing, Paul, because you know how the finances go, and if I don't do it right, then they'll say, oh, well, you didn't do that, and you forgot to do this, and, you know.
Item G4, when you get to it, would award the contract and your direction to the finance committee to bring forward the monies that come forward from G3, which you have now not done, so I can't bring forward something that you haven't yet approved. But G4 would award the construction contract. Then there would be needed to be monies for contingency, which the city engineer believes might be, that will be necessary, as well as some of the inspection costs. Those costs were going to be covered by the contribution from the developers in G3. If you don't approve G3, that $86,000 may not be available to cover the inspection costs.
Well, on G5 gives the $86,000, so if I made the motion to amend the 2020 approved projects, okay, and, and the, have it as a carryover as an approved project in the 2021 budget, using the capital fund related to Marquette Avenue extension from 49th to 51st, with 925 appropriations and $86,000 donations from the developers, and the 600 transfer inspection assistance fund of that, that would pretty much cover it all. Cover this year, it could cover next year. It covers the transfer to the budget. Am I missing something?
I believe, Alderman, you are missing something, in that G5 creates, it amends the proposed 21 budget to create an appropriation, the 2020, 2021 budget for this project. It does not award the project, it creates an appropriation to do so.
I changed the word. I changed the word to say, to motion to amend the 2020 approved project, which it is. It's already a 2020 approved project. Agreed?
It is a 2020 approved project.
Okay, because the last part of it, so I'm motioning to amend that, and I'm also motioning to carry over as an approved project in the 2021 budget, okay? And then I'm asking to do that using the capital funds related to Marquette Avenue from 49th to 51st, with 925,000 appropriations, and then using the $86,000, and everything else stays the same. So I'm covering this year's, then I'm covering the carryover from next year's, all in that one motion on your side.
I believe, though, that motion would be inappropriate in that it essentially becomes a budget amendment, and there is no budget amendment ordinance and contributor on your agenda this evening. There is on your agenda this evening, item G4, which would in fact award the construction contract.
Then I can make my motion say that I direct you to move forward a budget amendment.
And once the budget amendment is brought forward and approved, then you could award the contract, but you can't award in a contract until you have an appropriation. You do have an appropriation to award the contract under G4. And should you approve item G3, you would have the additional resources necessary to deal with the inspection costs.
I think what I have here is a trust issue. I seriously believe that I have a trust issue, because I've been joked around on this project so much, and the developers that have been waiting to put in their $25 million project has been, they've been waiting as well. And we've been missing out on all of that. I just want that to end. I just want the project to be able to move forward. I want a clean motion that does everything. I want it carried over, because we know we're not going to build it this year. So awarding a bid and then not having the money in the budget for next year does, does not get us where we want. I don't want to play that game. I just want it clearly in that.
Paul, can you inform the council that if we go with steps G3, four, and five, that this project will get funded and built next year?
Alderman, if the council adopts items G3 and G4, G5 is no longer necessary, because the project has been awarded and contracted for. At that point, the funding is in place.
Okay. Okay, then, older woman, let's go back to G3. You have a motion to create the agreement with Creative Homes and Franklin 49th Street LLC to construct West Marquette Avenue from South 51st Street to South 49th Street.
The problem with G3 is, it says both developers are agreeable to the content, and they haven't looked out the details on it, because they don't want to go into agreement until they know the money's there, because they're like, you're wasting our time. Stop wasting our time. We've spent weeks and weeks on this agreement, and they're going wide.
Why don't we then approve it with technical corrections by staff and the city attorney?
An agreement with the developers, because they are the ones who have designed it.
Older woman, you wanted to go out for bid. We went out for bid. We've got some pretty attractive bids out here.
We do. I don't, you know, Alderman, I don't think you understand what I've been going through with this project.
You know, I heard the trust issue. I'm giving you the opportunity. Let's move this item forward and get the motion on the table, so you can get it going.
If I felt confident, I would be more than happy to do that. But right now, I've got a document that says developers are agreeable, which they haven't. I've got no funding, which they say they're not going to sign this until you get the funding. So we got a little bit of a trust issue with the developers because of all the problems with the agreement.
We're going to subsequently make a motion to make the funding available.
I'll make the motion on G3 to approve the agreement with Creative Homes Inc. and Franklin 49th Street LLC to construct West Marquette Avenue from 51st to 49th Street, contingent upon funding within the budget for the project, and agreement with the developers, and corrections by the city attorney.
I have a first, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Alderman Nelson. Any discussion, city attorney?
For the record, for the record, even though it's the audio, but for council, understanding and developer understanding our financial contribution requirements in this draft development agreement. So with regard to the state of the motion read by older woman Willoughby on funding within the budget, that is with the understanding that there will also be funding provided by the donations, including money from developers.
They're signing this. Nicole, are you still on?
I am. I mean, when you guys are moving your microphones, it's really, really difficult to hear. I think, you know, to your point, we're, I think we're very, very close on the agreement with both developers. Obviously, I can't speak on the other developer's behalf, but I think, you know, from all the discussions with Glenn, Jesse, we were all prepping to this, I think we're very close. There are some technical changes, there's some things that we need to find, just finalize in that, but I think we're close. I'm confident we're going to come to an agreement with the city. But as Alderman Willoughby said, it was kind of a viewpoint to continue on that path until we knew the funding was there. So I guess, short of that, is I think we're going to be able to come to an agreement, but I think we just need to understand that, I think there's got to be some of those technical adjustments that we all agree to.
Correct. That's going to be in the, in the motion, and we'll work out the little details, just long it doesn't cost the city anymore.
No, I think from the dollar standpoint, I think that was what we've agreed to. I think there was just some, some verbiage, and I think some of the engineering, who was going to finalize some things, I think were just some pieces we were kind of working through, but again, I think minor in the whole scheme of things.
Okay. Alderman, or Alderman Hanneman, and then Alderman Humber.
I just want to make a comment that I thought I was pretty clear on G3 and G4 to G5, and I feel like what just happened was completely vandalsword. And I also feel that you made some accusations against our professional staff that I disagree with and reject, but I just needed to say that.
Okay, Alderman Humber.
I don't know why we're making this so confusing. It was laid out very clearly. I understand that some people are skeptical, but the rest of us aren't. So I don't know why we're doing all this maneuvering now. We've spent time on this. We've spent years on this, I understand, but if it's in a presentable form right now, why can't we just accept and move on, pass the resolutions that are here, and let's move on with this? We've got bids, we can let them go, I'm going to be in favor of it. I'm ready to move on. I don't understand why we just can't do that, and why all of this maneuvering has to continuously happen.
I believe I made the motion, but it's been seconded.
It has been seconded by Alderman Nelson. Older woman, I don't want to get into a he said, she said, a pissing match between your older, between the council members here. If you've got something to say to finish, please say it, but don't take it out on us.
Well, I think that.
Because we're supporting it.
I understand that, but I also had an Alderman question what I said, when it says right here, both developers are agreeable to the content, I talked to both of them and they weren't. So I thought that was important to point out to the council, that you have a public document that is not reflecting what is actually happening, and it does need work.
Correct, and that's why we did add that. It's going to be worked out. Correct?
Yes, my motion is.
Yes, yes. And, and so, I mean, I think the council has heard enough about Marquette Avenue. They understand that there is urgency on your behalf to get this done. The staff should also know that, or the council should also know that staff has also been talking to another developer on this matter as well, that if that developer would do something different.
There's some controversy, and that's not on the internet.
No, but it's in discussion, so, but the council is deciding to move forward, so all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Five in favor, and then again.
And G4?
I'm voting to effect. G4, that's the resolution to award the construction contract to Thomasini Contractors Inc. for the construction of the 2020 Marquette Avenue Road in the amount of $737,954.90.
What?
Seven hundred and thirty seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty four dollars and ninety cents.
I'm prepared to make the motion, but I need to know where the rest of the money is coming from, because this is going to go in a 2021 budget, and that's now funding. That funding, we can award it, but that's not enough to do the project. So award the bid with the rest of the money.
Uh, city, or, wait, Alderman Humber.
I do believe we've been assured by the finance director that this does in fact do that, that it will move forward.
The item indicates that this item is giving direction to the finance officer to bring forward the budget amendment for the $86,000, which the developers have offered in item G3 as an additional resource to pay for that inspection. We will bring that forward to your adoption meeting next, at the next council.
So I think it stands on its own at this point.
Yeah.
So clarification, the total money we need is $970,000 for this with all your contingencies. We're going to make a motion to award it for $737,000 odd cents. We're going to add $86,000 to it. The rest of the money to award this bid, to pay for this bid is coming from where, and where is the motion to put that in the 2021 budget?
The direction in G4 says to bring forward the additional budget amendment. That would be an amendment to the 2021 budget, which will be adopted. That would be an amendment to the 2021 budget, which will be adopted, scheduled for adoption or consideration at your next meeting. Staff will bring forward the recommended motion to put the additional resources in the budget for those, for that item.
Do you believe you'll have the additional resources to match up and that will come forward and do that?
I'm confident that that's the case.
Okay, then I make the motion.
To accept the motion.
To award the bid.
Okay.
To the Thomasini Contractors.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dan Mayer? Alderman Mayer? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, the motion passes. Five in favor, none against.
And so, Mr. Robins, are going to the next meeting, you're going to bring forward the budget amendment?
That'll be part of your adoption process, yes.
And that's the last time that the budget can be, that can be amended?
Correct. Takes a simple majority to do so.
You will say that? Now, we don't have to do G5, so. Then G6 is on page 147.
And I'd like to make the motion to adopt the ordinance to grow only one side instead of both sides. Because the developer has requested that, he said they need that. That was their intention all along. He's okay with putting our restrictions in there, but police department didn't want to put our restrictions in there so we could do Milwaukee and have it go on the even side of the street if it's a snow problem issue.
You do know the plan approved 36 additional spaces?
For?
For the expansion on St. Edmunds. Correct. We did that. The city planner, why don't you, do you agree? Oh, your thing doesn't work. Oh, Alderman Harper, Alderman, Alderman Harper and left at 10:22. We're on.
What are you doing?
We're on St. Edmunds.
It's all screwed up too.
In August, the planning commission approved a plan amendment to add 36 more parking spaces to the St. Edmunds parking project. So now we have 320 spaces approved for the site, which is 38 more than you actually required. For onsite parking, just to say off-street.
Do either want to give me out the email he sent you?
Yes.
He's still requesting that he wants it on one side.
No.
All right, so I'm making the motion to adopt the ordinance in order to modify the municipal code to section 245, 5D4, designing parking restrictions on one side of West St. Edmunds Street from South 27th Street to South 31st Street. That's what the developer's asking.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Alderman Nelson. Any further discussion? Alderman Harper?
The city is concerned about the plowing of it and the additional cost. And I would also take care of our, if we went with no parking on either side to accommodate the plowing and all the other issues that were raised, that would also take into consideration the police chief's idea of not having to control it all the time and having additional expense on the police to make sure that they're fine on the side. So I think by saying no, you're going to answer both questions. For both the DFW and the police, with saying no parking on either side, but that would be my thought.
So Alderman Harper, you're in favor of no parking?
Yes.
City attorney? Or Alderman, 10:25? 10:25, Alderwoman Hanneman, return. Alderwoman Hanneman, you didn't want to interject on this? Okay. Steph, your recommendation is not to allow.
Correct.
Correct. Because of the width of the road and the safety issues.
Correct.
Correct.
And the developer addressed it.
And plan addressed it back in August and giving them, addressing their issue that they needed additional parking spaces. And we approved 36, 36 additional parking spaces. Now they want more. I'm not sure if this is the way to address the more question, that issue that they have.
During the original design, they wanted a much wider road to park. And we made the width we did, asking for no parking. And so now this is, most of the developer coming in, these big hit additional spots on site, so it's not needed. So maybe difficult plowing. No question mutual, if we get an issue with their void, it's going all up to Minnesota, parking. I don't think they realize that this place is open. I think as soon as we do allow this to be open, we'll be revisiting the station a few months once employees start figuring out to leave the park.
Well, that's why they suggested having the hourly.
And I understand that. Police chief also mentioned that he doesn't want to have to continue to run them and make sure, you know, it gets open three hours after four hours and try to catch the.
They don't really have to do that.
But if they're on my ticket.
I just thought we could try to do something for the developers. If you don't want to do that, just vote no. You don't have to keep arguing and you can just vote no.
Okay.
It's not, it's a pretty minor request for a few parking spots on one side of the street. They do it, somehow they manage to do it in Milwaukee all the time. It's snowbothering. You don't have the snow like we used to.
City engineer?
I would add, if you do vote to restrict parking on one side, the restriction should be on the south side. I'll make that a modification.
I can. The south side.
Now I'm in my second.
What is the amendment I did?
Direct it to the south side.
Restricted parking on the south side.
And no parking on the north side.
No parking on the south side.
No parking on the south.
Do you allow parking on the?
On the north side. And you can, we're not going to police it. There's not going to be a time constraint on it, is there?
No, it's just one side.
One side parking, okay. And is there a distance from where to where that it's going to be?
We would restrict it from the.
Okay, Alderman, all the persons, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Carry now? Motion passes. Five in favor, none against. I will yield the chair. Back to the mayor. At 10:29.
Resolution, closing conditions for special use, the development of two approximately 150,000 square foot or one 300,000 square foot industrial spec buildings for HSA on Miller property. Our agenda is here, but we must be approved.
So move.
Second.
Alderman Willoughby?
Do we know who or what yet?
No.
Just, you know, care of who or what?
Yes, sir.
No, I just wanted to point out that Jeff Hoffman is here, he's the real estate broker who is representing the property.
Do you have any questions? You want to know who?
Yeah, just wanted to know what. I just wanted to bring in another swat or no?
Not appropriate. Do not believe that is the zoning code that was negotiated here, but we are.
It's the topic of the night.
Yes, yes. So the.
Jeff, can you give us your name?
Yes, my name is Jeff Hoffman. I am a principal with Kushner-Wakefield Berkey. We are the leasing and sales agent for HSA Commercial. We've been working on this project with Mr. Villar and Callie and staff for probably 18 months now. Very excited about the opportunity for HSA, especially with the new interchange at Elm. The plan for HSA Commercial, they are a national developer. They build Class A institutional caliber industrial buildings. They develop and hold them for their own account, so they're not in the business of building them and flipping them out right away. So they're very particular on the types of tenants they want. With the location, they don't want to have unnecessary restrictions on the type of tenants that they can land. E-commerce and logistics facilities, not cross dock terminals, but logistics facilities, e-commerce tenants are prevalent in the market right now. And the challenge with, and why they're requesting to have it, a use that's approved upfront here is most of these tenants have to move very, very quickly. So when a need comes up, they see the building, like the building, they want to be in a building within 30 to 45 days. So they can't accommodate it, but they just move on. So again, I want to stress, HSA develops and owns on their own account. They're particular about the types of people they want to do business with. But e-commerce and logistics companies are very, very active in the marketplace right now. So that is a use that I know they've been very straightforward, saying that they need to have the ability to recruit those types of tenants.
So could you give me an example of some that you have, and you're saying e-commerce and you're particular and what you have now and what you.
Yeah, that's a great question. So a lot of the, what you're seeing with e-commerce is the retailers are now distributing or shipping out of warehouses. So they'll typically work with third-party logistics companies. A good example in Oak Creek, one that's expanding right now is AIM Logistics, one of my clients, CH Coakley. These types of tenants will work with the retailers. Amazon just planted a big flag in Oak Creek. I mean, that's the synonymous name with e-commerce. But what we're seeing with these types of buildings is more of the third-party logistics companies that work with the national retailers. We're also for the larger building, the 300,000 square foot building. We're talking to a Fortune 500 distribution center that would be supplementing a manufacturing building. So those are the types of tenants that we're seeing right now.
How do you specifically get the building pre-built exactly like they want?
Yeah, so there is a pre-standard across the industry. They're going to build a 250-foot deep, 32-foot clear height internally. They're going to have state-of-the-art sprinkler systems, state-of-the-art truck ports, parking. And we, I think they've developed a pretty visually appealing package. So just based on the experience of them being a national developer, they understand what the market wants. Yes.
Just for the record, any early indication of how many jobs goes to buildings like for him?
Yeah, so for 300,000 square feet, we would anticipate it's going to be between 200 to 300 jobs. Total tax assessed value with Class A institutional value in real estate right now on the industrial side is probably $20 million in tax value.
I make the motion, Alderman?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Jeff. Break down, thank you, break to more. A. Resolution to authorize amendment two, page one, task order five, Rupert Milky Andy for preliminary design Hickory Street from Palm Road to West Oakwood Road.
So we anticipated building Hickory Street with some other properties developed. And, but we are finding the need that we need to do some preliminary design to want to accommodate HSA, so their facilities. Gas line wants to relocate, so we need to have a design of where our growth point to go before we double or to reconstruct their new facilities. We need some preliminary plans really to get going to help facilitate some of the other properties. So again, we like the way we could, but we're going with the $46,000 just to do the preliminary design. And this isn't the full construction documents. We will turn that loose later, once we actually have some new projects developed. By and circuit, we remind you that we really don't have any projects right now. Deep in, but I can tell you, we're very close to having some of those developed.
Mover option A?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I love the referee question, Alderwoman Willoughby as much as. G9 is release of X scroll for Hinnock subdivision. Alderman Hanneman?
I just have a question on the release of X scroll, and does that go back to the original developer?
Can it go back to whoever placed money, so it's three to Melton to place the.
I make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. G10, a resolution accepting easements for some grand extended 340 of a return on their Ryan Meadows. Alderman, move forward. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. G11, informational only on the proposal budget timing, schedule, presentation. Anything from council? Any corrections or steps? Okay, we'll move on to G12, which is a report on expenditures related to COVID-19. Mr. Robins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city was awarded a relative recovery grant through the state coming from the federal under the CARES program of $585,000. To date, we have been reimbursed $169,000. In October, at the end of September, we requested a further $23,000. And we are in process of requesting additional money that will take us up to 453. And working with the Director of Administration, we anticipate that we will request claims for all $585,000. Likely, we will make additional claims with the state such that if there is additional money available through the state, we might be in fact able to receive that. Through a legal Wisconsin municipalities meeting about two weeks ago, they did indicate that nearly half of the money that was allocated to the municipalities across the state has not yet been claimed. And the state believes there may in fact be some additional monies available. So if so, by making additional claims, it is possible, not certain, possible, that the city might receive additional funding.
Questions? Speaker Rich? G13, September financial report in the handle?
This financial report was.
By the way, you did see on the internet that we are broke. Yes, they did.
I can personally see that, but I can assure the council that we are not broke. You might believe everything you read on the internet, but I would say that might be something you would be skeptical of. I would point out in the report that there is on page 346, a report of spending in the capital improvement fund by projects, so that you're aware of that. On page 347, 348, and 349, because park impact fees have been a subject of interest in a part of the county council, we have now spent all the impact fees that were collected through the first quarter of 2008. So we are moving in the right direction, but our. the right direction, but our resolution to extend the expenditure period will expire in approximately two years, in which case we need to get our spending up to within eight years of that time. So that would take you to 2016 or thereabouts. So we have, we have to keep spending park expenditures to stay current. And other than that, I don't think there's anything of real significance, but I'd be happy to entertain some questions if there are some.
Move the place on.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. G14, amended recommendation for the 2020 healthcare program of the town administration services selecting United Healthcare's apartment.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. G15, does amendment to severance pay language and employee handbook due to the addition of WRS?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. No. Just in case. Talking, Alderman Nelson, tonight, I'm the move I want. Vouchers and payroll.
He's messing with us.
Motion to approve the following. City vouchers are an ending date November 2nd in the amount of $1,438,241.93. Payroll dated October 23, 2020 in the amount of $428,741.44. Payments for various payroll deductions in the amount of $446,977.54. City matting payments and estimated payroll dated November 6, 2020 in the amount of 422,000. Payment for various payroll deductions, estimated $250,000 plus city matting payments and approximate tax disbursements with an ending date November 2nd, 2020 in the amount of $69,330.98. And approval to release payment to Oakwood Ryan, Oakwood Ryan Creek, LLC in the amount of $25,285. An approval to release payment to Super Excavators, Inc. in the amount of $126,758.70. An approval to release payment to Loomis and Ryan, Inc. in the amount of $4,731. I'm sorry. $4,731,123.64.
So move.
Second.
The listino, who's called.
Alderman Haneman?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Haneman?
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Excuse me. First of all, motion carries. Five, ayes. No, no, one absent, no standing. And this is, you know, like, what I'm gonna do. I don't, she smiled. We move to item 81, licenses. Alderman Haneman.
The license committee moves- The license committee moves the approval of applicant Holtermann, Cherry, Craig, Crack, Bravis, Demille, Tejeda, and Weeks. And we move to hold for appearance for applicant Levacca.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries.